December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. It is twelve thirty P M. The elected officials here today are Councilor Becky Bogdan, Councilor
Gary Garrett.
Councilor Gary Garrett. Councilor Craig Christensen, Councilor Catrice McKay, Councilor Rachel Whipple, and Councilor George Handley. Although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those invited by the council may speak or ask questions, unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called on by the council chair. When speaking, please be sure to use a microphone so the record is clear and those attending virtually can hear you. Please also be sure to limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a side conversation, please step out of the work meeting room. It is proposed we approve the following minutes. April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four work meeting minutes. December third, two thousand twenty-four work meetings. If there's any objections or changes, now would be your time to say something. Seeing none, I declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent. All right, our first order of business is going over an ordinance regarding the Northeast Neighborhood Plan Approval. It will be presented by Jessica Denique, and then we will have a presentation by some members of the committee that created the Northeast Plan.
Okay, hey, there we go. The Northeast Neighborhood Plan has followed our typical planning process. We started with our kickoff meeting in open house to gauge inserts for our neighborhood. We created our advisory committee and went through the drafting process with them and then the standard approval process. It's been to Planning Commission and then we're here. We do it city council. In working with our advisory committee, we created eight objectives for the plan to address. We'll go through most of these objectives as part of the presentation. So the first objective is to understand and identify land uses and needs and desires, especially relating to residential, commercial, and open space. This is a very broad objective, and it's included in a majority of our neighborhood plans. And with this plan, it is a, it was a compromise of aligning city goals and priorities with neighborhood goals and priorities, such as providing more housing while preserving areas of open space and communal access. Providing education about development difficulties and highlighting other plans that have been adopted for this area.
The second objective was our main focus. It was to preserve the area's strong presence of single-family home neighborhoods, local urban agriculture, and public access to natural spaces while identifying opportunities to promote infill development that aligns with these essential neighborhood qualities. We spent a majority of our time with our committee going over the project area, discussing where fit different land uses, what, what they would like to see, and how we can bring general plan goals into this. One thing that is unique to this plan, in the lower section of the project area, you have some crosshatching. Obviously, agriculture has strong ties to this area, and the committee felt it was important that agricultural uses felt welcome as long as they were wanted by the property owners. But they also wanted to create a clear vision for what development they thought would fit there should property owners sell or decide to develop. So these crosshatching areas, the green is to represent that the agriculture is still a welcome use, while the different colors correspond to different land uses. There are single-family dwellings and low-density residential. Continuing on with this, the general plan goals that we were trying to make sure that our future land use incorporated was to encourage the development of single-family home neighborhoods in key areas while still promoting a mix of densities in residential areas and encouraging small-scale development. Our plan encourages housing in higher-density areas that are for-sale housing or include for-sale housing, just to encourage that priority of that small-town home field that has been so important to this neighborhood for so long. Our next objective was to identify ways to highlight this as a gateway to the city. The general plan proposes two new design corridors in addition to the University Ave corridor. And there's also the gateways plan that has been adopted, which there are multiple gateways in this project area. So the Northeast Neighborhood Plan includes suggestions for future code requirements for these design corridors and also ties back to the gateways plan and their design aesthetic and recommendations for these areas. And fourth objective was to evaluate the annexation area. We started discussing this a lot with our committee, and they let us know it was also very important for us to reach out to the individual property owners. So we sent out this survey to each property owner in the area that has yet to be annexed in to get feedback from them on if they were interested in annexing in, if they already had a decided timeline on when they wanted to be annexed in, or if they had any questions about annexation, they could contact us. The general response from that survey was most people that did respond weren't sure on their timeline. But they wanted to have annexation as an option. Based on our discussions with our committee and the feedback from the survey, we're proposing with this plan to remove the federal land from our annexation area and then the Springdale community. We reached out and spoke with the Springdale HOA, and they don't want to be a part of the city. And we've also spoke with our Public Works, and they don't see it feasible for us to provide services that far out. The next objective that was really important to our committee was to provide education for developers who would be coming into this area, so to identify development opportunities and restrictions, including adopting recommendations from, and best practices from the Hillside and Canyons Plan to preserve Provo Canyon. So we worked very closely with members of our Public Works Department to create an entire chapter that explains the development difficulties with slope, with fault lines, with slides, to explain our transfer development rate program. And then, in addition to just restrictions, we really wanted to highlight opportunities for developing recreation in the canyon that would be sustainable in the long term. So we do highlight amenities that were suggested in the Hillside and Canyons Plan, and we highlight the Provo Foot Hills Trail Master Plan that was adopted by Parks and Rec. Both of these plans already have great recommendations for creating sustainable recreation in the canyon. Another objective was to explore opportunities to enhance safety and improve multimodal transit and active transportation. With our committee, they highlighted areas where speed limit signs were missing or were in places that weren't very visible. We've already let Vern know about that and have started working on getting those placed. But additional safety improvements that were suggested were adding things like trail crossing signs, improving access to the Indian Road Trailhead, adding more trespassing signs to prevent people going on private property, just different ways to make recreation and transportation safer in this area. So the implementation plan, you'll notice a lot of these goals are for all three phases. Each phase represents approximately five years. A lot of them are multifactorial and depend on development coming in, or they're things that need to be constantly evaluated, like the hazards maps. But we are very confident that with this implementation table, we'll be able to achieve the objectives of the plan in the physical environment and not just on paper. So, public feedback that we've had since it's been on Open City Hall, there was concerns about accessory dwelling units. This plan doesn't propose anything about changing where those are allowed or how they should be established. It just mentions that they are a tool for adding density in single-family. There's also concerns around design corridor requirements. We have language in there that mentions these requirements would only be required as properties redevelopment and wouldn't be required for existing properties. More recently, we got concerns that the plan doesn't accurately portray the desires of people in the area to be annexed. Again, we based our proposals on survey responses that we got, and that's all that we could do. There's also concern about discouraging trail access. We focused on plans that have already been adopted by Parks and Rec as, as best recommendations for how trails should be improved and where trailheads should be placed. But the plan does not say we can't have other trails elsewhere. And then additional concerns were regarding housing and where high-density housing should be placed. We keep it placed along University as the major corridor, so it's not creeping into those longstanding single-family neighborhoods that are expected to have lower traffic. And then feedback from the Planning Commission after presentations included general edits focusing mostly on housing diversity and a lack of language for addressing small-scale infill. With regards to housing diversity and what was proposed along University Avenue, we just wanted to show a comparison of what the current land use map is and what our future land use map proposes. There is a lot of area that is currently higher density, and you can see there is a good amount of diversity within the Northeast. One of the main reasons our future land use map doesn't propose as many changes is because a lot of this area doesn't need to be redeveloped yet. A lot of the higher-density along University seeing any sort of redevelopment in that area doesn't make any sense. Do you have any questions?
I don't. That was great, Jessica. Any questions for Jessica?
If you can go back to the slide and the feedback from the planning you explained. So the ADUs, ADUs were, were welcomed but not officially adopted. Is that kind of my, is that correct?
In, in our plan, we, our language is very neutral on it. We did discuss ADUs with our advisory committee a lot, which is part of the reason the language is in there. But we are not proposing any changes to the process for establishing them or where they're located. Just saying, should a property owner want an ADU, they can follow the legislative process for establishing one.
I assume that, that was before the vote.
We just updated the language today. It did say administrative process, but since you have changed the text amendment, we just changed the language to say the legislative process.
So can you go back to the, read the slide about the, the feedback from the planning commission, the future land, lack of language addressing small-scale infill development? Can you address that concern? What, I mean, I, I, I sense that that's like kind of the crux of the argument that happened on the commission. And that's the difference of opinion between those on the commission who voted against it and the group. Am I getting that right?
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion about, especially with the planning commission, about small-scale infill being easier because it makes it so that they don't need high-density apartment buildings. Our plan, this Northeast Neighborhood Plan, does not have any language aggressively promoting it, but it also doesn't have any language that says that it cannot happen. So we do have areas that are proposed to be rezoned, single-family, residential, but we don't include a desired lot size, so it could be R lot six.
So as, from staff's point of view, is, what's your take? I mean, how, how do you suggest we think about that difference of opinion?
I, I think the plan that we have does represent the desires of the committee and can meet the general plan goals. So any additional language promoting small-scale infill or any other things that the US and council would like to see, you can let us know, and we can figure out how to work some wording into there.
I mean, that just seems like a pretty small issue with maybe a fix of some language or something if it needs to be fixed. But it resulted in a four-four vote, so I'm trying to understand why there was that much division over, over a lack of specificity on this.
Did you listen to the party?
I did not listen to it. I don't, I, I know that's what you guys do. I'm not, I don't have bandwidth for that.
You've read the report.
I did read the report.
Okay.
I did read the report, but I just want to get a, a sense of how you are advising us at this point going forward.
Um, I feel like a lot of the type vote actually just, some of it does come down to a different personality and opinion of the planning commission members themselves. I think we can fit in language pretty simply into the plan to better support small-scale infill development. I think the plan as we have it right now meets what the committee was expecting to preserve their neighborhood and the priorities that they hold so dear while still meeting general planning goals.
Okay, any other questions for Councilor Bogdan?
So, well Sharon's here in the back. So, in this email, some of the suggestions that she said were getting someone's mind. So I'd like to know why, Sharon, can you, can you tell them which ones weren't?
Is your mic on, Becky?
Can you tell them which ones weren't tweaked, and then they can explain to us why they weren't tweaked?
So the email that I just sent this morning earlier, were the ones that weren't. The one, my concern was Dr. Map on, on Canyon Road that calls out Canyon Road as an arterial. And, and as I mentioned in my email, Commissioner, the Chair.
With luck.
Thank you. Suggest, you said you liked my suggestions, and you put most of them into place. Most of them are simply grammatical, and I appreciate that. The one about the map, and I don't know if you have access to it, shows Canyon Road as an arterial. And I pointed out in my email that half of what's in your map, by definition, you say it's a thirty-seven-lane road. Only half of what's in your map is only two lanes of road. And, and it runs right in front of the grammar school. As I kind of looked at it, didn't include in the email, it said something, it, it shows a comparison that thirty-seven-hundred North, say, is only listed as a collector. And I don't have numbers to prove it, but I would be hard-pressed to believe that Canyon Road gets more traffic than thirty-seven-hundred North. That was down by Willis Pitt's top. That was just my thought. So I felt like Canyon Road should be changed to, sorry, I don't have, I do have, pardon me.
That, the half of it.
The color that is, so I'd love to see Canyon Road move to blue on your map instead of being red. Because then it would be identified as a collector road, not a main arterial. I felt like it runs through residential similarly to thirty-seven-hundred North all along the way, so it seems more by definition a collector. That was the main one. I had a question about the project. It said something about improvements on Canyon Road, but again, I pointed out that that's the nicest part of Canyon Road. I'm not sure why it's listed in the phase-two improvements or something, so. Those are really the two main that weren't addressed, I believe.
And then there was some question about Canyon Road on the end going through?
Well, I'm curious about, and, and that was our concern, because the planning commission was on that same night as the UDOT project night. And the more we look at this, what I'm going to call the Swoop project down at the end of Canyon Road, feels like if they have to cut away, and this would be for development services or whoever takes care of the roads, sorry, I don't have all the right terms.
All the words.
All the words. If they have to cut away that corner that makes it a blind corner to create the swoop, if we just cut away that corner, we could widen Canyon Road, and we wouldn't have to do the swoop possibly. But again, as I went on UDOT's website just Wednesday, the swoop was not on their website, so I don't know. I'd love for that stoplight not to come into play. I don't think it's needed there. I think it would actually aggravate issues. So I think just widening Canyon Road if we can widen the roadway. But I think there might be a wellhouse or something there that prevents widening it, so that
That light will, that light will be, it'll be a UDOT decision.
Well, this is Canyon Road part, so that would not be.
But
The stoplight itself is UDOT.
The only light being considered, the one of University.
Yes.
Gordon, can you address some of that of why Canyon Road would be an arterial instead of a collector, especially on the end by Canyon Crest Elementary?
So, so right at the very end, UDOT is planning to put a signal at the intersection of Canyon Road and University. The, when they put that in, it will prohibit westbound through and westbound left. They, eventually, we'd like to have those put back, but before they could be put back, we have to bring Canyon Road in, in perpendicular to University, and that's the swoop, the consequence. We have to come up and around, so we have, I believe it's two to three hundred feet of, of direct perpendicular into the intersection. Then they would add back the left turn and the through movement. And I think, so that's a fairly significant cost, because we do have to cut away the amount, you know, there's a site distance there. There's a number of issues. So we have a layout that UDOT gave us showing us what it needs to be. It's fairly pricey, so it's a ways out in terms of when we actually do that work. That's your question.
Gordon, just to be clear, you're talking about fifty-six-hundred north and university, correct?
Yes, yes. Okay, fifty-six-hundred west, north, and university where Canyon Road ties in.
But the other question is, why is that part of Canyon Road that's a two-lane road considered marked red as an arterial when it should be a collector?
So, the way the roads function is more, more important than the number of lanes. It functions as an arterial. And so my, my recommendation is the road designations should be handled at the transportation master plan element as opposed to the area master plan. That, it, the way you look at a classification of a road is what type of roads tie into it and how does it transport traffic. So when we say that's an arterial, we don't allow driveways off of it. It changes how we let that road function. So, and eventually it'll have more lanes, but you have, you have, you can have a two-lane arterial and a three-lane collector. It's how they function through what you allow. Do you allow driveways, how many, the separation of streets? And ultimately, it's going to be back to volumes of traffic that are going, that are going to be there. So we really look at what the ultimate volume that road's going to be, and it's in the volume of arterial as opposed to collector. I don't know if that, and then that can all be addressed to, yes.
Yeah, so do we already have the minimum right-of-way for all of Canyon Road to define it as an arterial?
No, so, so there is a lot of roads. So for example, Geneva Road doesn't have all the right-of-way road that's going to be for a collector. So virtually every one of our roads, unless they're totally built out, don't have all the right-of-way. So that's just, as, as development comes, the right-of-way is gathered, and then it's built out to the ultimate size. But we do not have all the right-of-way on Canyon Road to build out to an arterial.
Question, Gordon.
Yeah.
So, so I just want to make sure I'm hearing this right. Then what you're saying is, as it relates to the plan, these roads actually need to reflect what the, what their transportation plan is for these roads, not necessarily the neighborhood plan?
Right, so my, so the city council has adopted transportation master plan that identifies which are arterial through the collectors, local roads, and defined it by volumes and the type and the use they have. And so I'm thinking, yeah, so, so you, you pull that directly from the, so I'd rather you not modify the transportation So I'd rather you not modify the transportation master plan through an area plan to modify it in the transportation class. So I, I think you're better off just doing what they did in plan, just bringing over the transportation master plan. And then if there needs to be adjustments or looking at it, that would happen at the transportation master plan.
Thanks Sharon, by the way, for letting me pick on the entrance.
All right. Anyone else have questions for Jessica? All right, thanks Jessica. We will move to the neighborhood. And they have ten minutes. Welcome guys, come on up. Oh, whichever one you want. You can do that one or that one.
That's closer to food.
I thank you so much for giving us the time to explain our three neighborhood northeast plan. The three neighborhoods that we're looking at currently today are the River Bottoms, North Timview and Sherwood. We felt that that was important and we actually point that out and identify that, that it's those three neighborhoods. The northeast area map that we're coming for this plan goes, well, we've got trails going all the way up to Bridalbell Falls that Provo City is taking care of, all the way down to throw thirty-seven hundred north, which changes its address to thirty-six fifty north and Foothill Drive. So it's kind of, that lumber keeps changing, but it's all the same road, just so you're aware, okay? Um, we are an exciting part of the city. Um, we're the gateway to Provo from the north end of the city, and we love it. The three neighborhood north plan, northeast plan that you have before you today is a culmination of many, many years in the making. Many lessons have been learned along the way in the process of developing this plan. Bill Pepperone, over there, he's still with us, has spent countless hours over the years meeting with residents and developers, trying to hammer out a guide that we as residents and the staff could look to for inspiration. This past year, a TAC committee was formed and we met all throughout the year. Erin Ardmore, Jessica and Mary were there every step of the way, listening and discussing and taking copious notes about the neighborhood plan. Many field trips were taken. Many extra meetings were held with residents in addition to the regular scheduled monthly meetings. The District One Board, who is now over these three neighborhoods, was also informed all along the way. The painstaking effort that was put in by the staff cannot be ignored. No matter what happens today, I want to publicly thank them, and I told them that before the meeting in case I messed up. But Erin, Mary, Jessica, Bill, thank you. You cannot even comprehend the amount of dedication that our staff in Provo City has put towards this neighborhood. And we appreciate it, and we have made sure that our residents know and appreciate the effort that every one of you in this room is putting forth in trying to service and help Provo City. Um, they have supplied maps and information about each and every parcel in these three neighborhoods. And I do mean each and every parcel. We drew those maps up there and Jessica was up there with a pointer. What about this one? What about this one? We had over four meetings just going over every parcel. Every parcel was analyzed and talked about by TAC and staff and residents. We, as the TAC group, feel that we have left no stone unturned in our efforts to put together this guide for our three neighborhoods. The exciting thing is that Jessica and Mary have put, and Erin have put together a beautiful document that we as a city can be proud of. And I don't say that lightly. That came with a lot of blood, sweat and tears, all three of them. And I want to thank staff for that. So exactly what is in our three neighborhoods, and I think that you need to hear this. We have four schools, Canyon Crest Elementary, Senior View Academy, Walden Schools Liberal Arts and a preschool in the Riverwoods. We are across the street location-wise from Timview High and Edgemont Elementary. This part of Provo City cares about education. We are crammed full of opportunities for our residents to seek education the way they want to be educated. Um, let's talk about housing. We have Legacy Village, which is a retirement community on University Avenue. And it's for all different levels of required assisted care. We have, um, oh, could you please, sorry, sorry, could you please put up the current land use map and the proposed land use map? And Jessica touched on this, this is kind of a misnomer, because we are already in the process of developing. We saw projects going through like Ryan Smith. We saw them going through and they've started building, even though we didn't have this proposed map done. We love what he's done. But we're like, so those aren't mentioned on the proposed future because they're already in play. And that's what Jessica was pointing out to you. These things are already being built or in play or getting ready to be built. So they're not actually being shown on this future map, okay? Um, we have Senior View Academy, which is a boarding school. Uh, we have Waterford Townhomes on Foothill. We have Arbers and Monday Avenue, which is apartments. We have foreign apartments, which is south of us, and we have many condos and townhomes in the Riverwoods. And the flats apartments are east across from the Riverwoods. And of course, we have Ryan Smith's two hundred and twenty-five townhomes that are currently under construction and they are gorgeous, and I'll invite you to go look at them. They're right there on the river. We have Three Fountains Townhomes, which is up on Canyon Road, and we have Edgemont Meadows, which are duplexes next to it. We have residential agricultural with homes on them. We have mixed R-one-ten homes and R-one-eight homes and R-one-six homes. We have many, many older homes in our neighborhood. And we are thrilled that people decided to fix them up and take pride in them. Some of these homes have dilapidated to the point that they are having to be torn down for new homes to be built. I myself have remodeled and sometimes rebuilt homes in our neighborhood that were beyond spending. Because they've aged out. We also have several properties on Canyon Road that are still in the county. And we hope that someday they will come into the city. And we appreciate Jessica and Mary reaching out to them and saying, we want you to come into the city. Are you interested? We're taking a survey. We get feedback from our residents saying, wow, that's, it's really kind of cool of the city to do that. They actually care about us. Yes, they do care about us. Um, I have worked on this process over the years with many, many residents that have moved into the city from the county all along Canyon Road, hand, handholding them, getting them into the city. And we're very, very happy to bring them into the city. We have many tip, different types of housing in these three neighborhoods. And as you can see, are in an active process of adding more. Preserves is adding twelve more homes. Glazier's Orchard is adding eight more homes. Ryan Smith, of course, is adding two hundred and twenty-fives. Cook's Property is being sold soon. And there will be many homes there. Grove's up by the cemetery is adding seven homes. And there are seven additional lots on Tony Brown's on Canyon Road that are coming in. So we have a lot of mixed housing and availability very near future for people to be able to expand into our three neighborhoods. We're excited about it. Let's talk about businesses in our northeast area. This is an important thing that we embrace as our neighborhood. We have Qualtrex. We have Ryan Smith High Tech Incubator, that he's building a three thousand, three, one thousand, hundred thousand square foot buildings. There used to be a horse farm there. It's gone now. So went from agricultural to now having a high-tech building there. We have Smash Dance. They took over the old UCCU building. It's huge. And they occupy all of it and are doing very well. We have Ancestry, which is now gone. We're proud that we launched them. They're gone. They grew up and left us. We're sad about that, but we're proud that our city did that and it was in our neighborhood. We have Event there. We have a dental research center on Canyon Road. They have electron microscope, which is super cool in the basement. How many people have that? And that's in the research center there. We have a kidney foundation. We have medical facilities in the Riverwoods. We have urgent care. We even have a specialty hospital down there. We have many tech companies. We have a pharmacy. We have a mortuary and we even have a cemetery. Um, we have many venture businesses in agricultural field. And they're actually selling them, and that's represented on the table today. They are legitimate businesses. They are selling in the commercial market and they also sell at, um, our market here in Provo. But they also sell in Salt Lake. They're viable businesses that are just as legit as any other business in this list. We have a giant reception center going in at the Mount of the Canyon. And we have more restaurants also on that side. What are our challenges? We do have challenges. Can you please pull up figure five point one and five point two? Yes, critical hillside map and the natural hazard map. Now, this is where it gets difficult, everyone. Please, please focus on these. This is what we have the big challenge on. These critical hillside map and the natural hazard map makes it extremely difficult, difficult to develop. In fact, to the point that we've overdeveloped too much and we had to create TAC, which is where we swap out their property, pardon, yes. Where we swap out their properties so that they can build somewhere else, because their houses are sliding down the hill. And we have a lot of them. So there's the critical hillside slope, and you can see that map is bleeding. All this red, all of this red and the crosshatches are really crazy. The red, so this thirty percent slope, but we're not California. We have snow. We have rain. We're dealing with a lot of weather issues, but we slide. We have the critical hillside where the crosshatches where, um, we've had to deal with that as a city and thus we had, uh, the swap out for people who own their homes to swap those out so that they can never be built on. Um, we have the natural hazard map. That's five point two figure. We have lots of natural, yep, we have lots of natural. Oh, that's brilliant. It's all right. Natural hazard map looks just as scary as the critical hillside map. And we had a whole special team put together just for the critical hillside map. And that critical hillside keeps extending on down from the south, so other neighborhoods are going to be dealing with this also. Okay, we have lots of trails that are beautiful that go up into there and we have access to them and they are important. We've had many meetings as a city over preserving those trails. As a committee, we have made sure that we have preserved those trails and the accesses to those trails. And I'm on Parks and Rec, so I made sure that we protected those because it's so important. And thank you for putting me on Parks and Rec Board. Okay. In closing, I want you to know that we live in a spectacular city. We are very blessed. The natural beauty and trails that we have are priceless. And we demonstrated this as a city when we joined together hand in hand and preserved Bridalbell Falls. Provo City saved Bridalbell Falls. Had we not all united, joined together and told the state we wanted that preserved, it would have never happened. And so we as a team work beautifully together. We also act as a gateway from the south to get up to Sundance Canyon, which is international. We have Provo River, which is beautiful, with the trails running through our three neighborhoods. And we have a beautiful oil orchard park that was around ten years in the making. Um, we have many, many housing choices becoming available in the future in the northeast area. And we appreciate all the work that you guys have done. And I sincerely hope that you understand that this is a guide and a recommendation. And we understand it may not be perfect and we may need to tweak it in the future, and that's fine. In the documents itself, it says that it's to be reviewed within a year. And we will find stuff because we grow up and we learn. But this is a beautiful document and we are thrilled after all of these years since at least twenty seventeen or so, twenty eighteen, I was on the committee for the twenty thirty plan, neighborhood plan entered John Curtis. This has been going on a long, long time and we finally have a document. Thank you.
Thanks Bonnie. Um, any questions for the committee? You may just. Okay, we, yeah.
To expedite agriculture, we wanted to do a little show and tell, and I have one for you probably don't have enough. I bought all the bear and honey they had left. So I have one for each of the council members and our well, so can I take mine? So this represents from Scott and Jenny's Orchard, from the Verid Honey. I put a piece of wool in there.
Thank you.
Everything in your bag has come from our neighborhood, our northeast neighborhoods.
Okay, while we have them here, any questions from the council for the TAC committee?
Wait, who gave us the wool?
Me. It's actually from the Maryland Sheep and Wool Festival, but it's supposed to represent the Ivy.
Oh, okay. I'm like, I'm a good clean wool. That would be great. Counselor Pendley.
Ivy has the sheep.
Yeah, I don't, um, first of all, I want to, I just wanted to thank everyone. I want to thank you and thank everyone else who's been involved with the, the TAC committee and the staff for similar reasons, um, because I know uh, this was put on hold for quite a while and, um, you know, it was kind of in the midst of some, uh, big political issues with development proposals and whatnot in the foothills. And, and so I know that I was part of the council that was promising this would happen eventually and, and, um, sometimes we have to move at a glacial pace, I guess, in, in, uh, making changes and, and putting together plans like this. But we're just grateful for your patience and grateful for your input. Um, so I'm wondering if you, uh, I'm, I'm, I keep, I was asking Jessica, but I'll ask you the same question. Do you have some suggestions for, uh, do you, do you as a committee feel that we need to make any tweaks? Uh, given the split vote from the planning commission, are you essentially asking us to just approve it and, and worry about any tweaks later? Is that, that's kind of what I'm getting from your presentation, but I don't know.
One second, but Brian's that question, Sharon?
I'd love to address that because I was a planning and heard the comments that were there. Um, so I did attend the planning commission and I, I apologize for missing Jessica's presentation at the planning commission because it was running from the UDOT meeting. So this was a lovely presentation. I appreciate you presenting that and standing up for our area. Um, what I heard from planning commission was, or I should say in that discussion was that, yes, they don't feel like possibly we're taking our part, but we completely failed in that meeting. And I say we because I also didn't bring it up. Projects such as Ryan Smith's and others that are already in the works, that are fairly large-scale projects that were not mentioned at all, were not brought up as part of what's already happening in our area. So there's a part of, and maybe because it's a future land use plan that they weren't brought up. But I think that they were unaware of some of the larger projects that are going on and being considered. Some that are already applied for. I don't think that they were entirely aware of some of the larger projects that were going on. So I, I feel like on some level, we're meeting what they were saying. Um, and, and it just simply wasn't part of the meeting, so that they didn't hold it in consideration as they hold in this plan.
Absolutely. Provo conference closed, and so there was no way to say, hey, but wait, these have been approved and they're going to be built on or they're in the process of being built. Because that's not the point of this plan is for the future.
It would just make sense visually. You, you may understand that now. It would make sense visually for them to have the current news map and future news map put together and say, this is, so they could really look at it and go, oh, that's what it will be in the once it's all. Because if you look at them separately, you haven't driven in, in a site, it will In the once it's all, because if you look at them separately, you haven't driven in, in a site, it looks like, it, it, it doesn't look correct.
Okay, we have a comment from Craig Christian six.
Well, um, when you gave the, the history, I also go way back in this. Uh, I remember a meeting with Bill. And some neighbor saying, look, we'll pay for this plan. We'll pay for it. We'll raise the money. Let's get this plan done and um.
We'll send you a bill.
Yeah. And um.
You never revoked the offer.
Yes, we did. Uh, I, I just want to say thank you um to all the neighbors who participated in this. This, this was a huge effort. Um, incredible shout out to the staff because being in staff in these meetings is not for the faint of heart. You have neighbors who are very energized and excited and uh very professional in terms of how they came about this. I would encourage us as a council, let's pass this plan. Rather than micromanage it or make exception, I think it's a solid plan. Will it need to change in the future? Yes, every plan does. But I would love to see this passed. It's way past due and again, just wanted to give thanks to the neighbors who did such good work on this.
Okay, counselor Bogdan.
Jack, are you saying those tweaks that we got this morning? We don't want to do those or do we need to pass it with?
Well, yeah, part of what I heard Gordon saying was we should address that through the transportation plan. So that may need to be addressed. We should probably address that through the transportation plan rather than the neighborhood plan.
I don't know that that's the tweet. I got something more this morning. It was like a red line document.
Yes, but that.
That's transportation.
That reflects what the map says. Am I doing that right or can I get it wrong?
No, so what the key difference is the last item in my email that suggests. A clarification on page nineteen and the definitions between the definitions. We were concerned that there was a little bit of confusion between the two.
That's to do with LVR and MGR.
And so in the last, the first paragraph, last sentence, it says, as shown on the map. If we could add three point three, so that we know what map we're referring to, that would be helpful. Or strike the sentence completely, that might also clarify it. We were. Concerned and had brought to our attention that there was confusion between text and maps. And we didn't want that confusion to continue. And, and, but to your point about the collector road and transportation, that would be the last sentence in the first paragraph. First paragraph, the MDR paragraph. With on Canyon Road to Collector versus.
Can you send that to Malia and maybe we can put it up on the screen?
Um, just my email that I sent. She should already have it, I guess.
Do you already have that?
We have nineteen.
Those, that should be easy. The material should be easy. It's like transportation last plan would be depending on public works of a later date.
Right.
Go, go smaller. We can go change the map right now.
Right, and that's what we, so if you look at.
Do we need to do a poll?
It would make sense to pick that up.
If I scroll up to the top of the page. So that first paragraph. What you see on the. It says LDR at the end of the line is where the sentence starts. You could simply refer, it could say, as shown on the map, figure three, three. Or you could strike that whole sentence. Either one would clarify that. Just kind of depends on which direction you'd like to clarify.
So do we need to take a little poll right at this moment? Have staff clean that up before it comes to us tonight?
Sure.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we strike as shown on the map.
Sentence.
This sentence. And that's gonna do it, right Sharon?
Um.
The whole sentence is starting as shown on the map. As the, okay, yeah. Strike it as Malia has it in the red line on the screen. And do I have a second?
Alright, do you have a second?
Take a second.
Okay, sorry. Um, any discussion on the motion? Alright, we'll take a vote. Counselor Garrett.
I'm in favor of that also.
Counselor Bogdan. Yes, Counselor Christian six.
Yes.
Counselor McCabe, yes. Counselor Whipple.
I think no, simply because. I, I want it to be consistent with the map, but I think it's useful to say the general areas so that it's clear we are saying where LDRs are. Instead of being more general about it. I like that definition and specificity. So I'd rather just make it. Actually match the map instead of take out that sentence. So I'm.
Counselor, um, Henley.
I should have spoke up, spoken up when you offered a chance to ask questions. I, I didn't speak quickly.
Move fast.
You moved a little fast. I, I don't feel prepared to vote. I didn't, I don't think I quite understood uh the reasons. Why, and I would like, would have liked to have heard staff.
The, the idea is that. You do the density, you know, on a major arterials and Canyon Road isn't technically, that part of Canyon Road is not technically an arterial. And we did look up on the master of transportation, it's a minor.
Well, it's a minor arterial.
So people could, you know, take down their single family homes and build a bunch of townhomes.
But is it inappropriate to ask for staff input on this? Cause that's what I wanted to hear, but I don't know. We're in the middle of a vote.
Why don't we finish the vote?
Okay.
Well, no, because I want more information. Sorry.
Travis online.
Travis, are you there? Well, he may not have heard and can't vote.
My, my question is more, can we debate during the vote or do we finish the vote either do it before or after? I was just procedural.
Yeah, it were really supposed to do that on the discussion on the motion before we start voting.
It did look right at you.
I'm, I'm not blaming you. I just went so fast and I was still trying to.
Hey Travis, did you hear that vote? Are you voting or did you listen? Hello? Alright, he can text you if he needs to, but he can't be heard, so don't worry about that. Um, hey, staff's opinion on this change.
Um, so if we think that it could. Kind of be a middle ground if we just instead of as shown on the map, we can say as shown in figure. So it's directing specifically to. The area that we're referencing, so we have that specificity that Counselor Whipple likes. Um, but it also gets rid of the ambiguity that. Seems the citizens were stumbling over. If, if that would be a good middle ground to address the concern.
Right, cause the concern is we don't want to say that we can have LDR all along Canyon Road.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we can just reference the exact figure, so there's clarity there.
Yeah, alright.
So I would move that we do that instead.
Okay. Let's change the vote to making that change. Got that, Malia? Kevin?
Kevin, do a new vote.
I think you need to do. So that's my motion.
Okay, you make the motion.
I'll second that.
We know what the motion is, right?
Do we? No, stated, stated, clear.
The motion is that we are now changing that sentence as recommended by Jessica.
As shown in, so.
On the map then figure.
Area, oh, as shown on the map and figure three point. Three point three, period. The rest is deleted.
No, LDR projects within the northeast area are planned. He probably wants to switch that around a little bit.
They want to.
LDR projects within the northeast area are planned in the areas shown, as shown on the map, figure three point three.
Bill, Bill knows what we're doing.
Yeah.
Alright, so do we have a second?
Alright, precious language, George's motion, Craig's second.
Oh, boy. Thank you, Kevin. Very good. Becky Bogdan, yes. Craig Christian, Catrice McKay, yes. Counselor Rachel Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor George Henley.
Yes.
Alright, I pass this seven. So we'll have that. Travis, is he listening and voting? Okay. Um, so.
Okay, so my other question is. I know that we're having problems with the. Right at the end of Canyon Road that um gravel pit, thank you. That's the part I was. The gravel pit. And I did listen to planning commission on Wednesday. And in this planet is MDR, which we have shut down for no sewer capacity. But yet it's going forward as MDR.
With less capacity.
With less capacity. Are we okay with that or is that something we need to change to an LDR for the future? Cause I know the neighborhood was in favor of an LDR, but I'm gonna be clear with the neighborhood here in a meeting. If we pass this now, then MDR, there's no way I can go back and say. It's gotta be LDR. It's gonna have to be MDR.
See, it's gonna have to be MDR within the parameters sewer, right? So, but, well, LDR with parameters and sewer. Well, but MDR with the parameters sewer does work too, which is what he's offering. But it has to be done by development agreement, which is limited to that. And, and if you don't do that plan in the amount of time you lose your zoning. Right?
Yes, we talked about this at length after the planning commission meeting. If we pursue LDR, then we have to amend the LDR zone because the building height doesn't work.
Which is more of an.
For the townhomes being proposed.
But if you approve the MDR with the development agreement, then nothing else bigger than what is, his plans can be built.
Unless he doesn't build within a year.
But the zone change, the zone change can revert.
The development agreement gets recorded on the property. If the zoning isn't changed, the development agreement is signed by the developer and by the mayor. And that gets recorded. So future property owners have to live by that development agreement. Now, the door is open for a future developer to come back before the city council and ask to renegotiate the development agreement. Yes, that possibility is already out there. That has to be done on a public meeting and the public is allowed to have their input.
And.
So. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I like the idea of going ahead and designating which areas. The neighborhood perspective, they want to be MDR so that public works would know. That these are areas for the capacity that we need to increase, so that they can take that into account with their. Pacific, right? Their long-term plan on where they're going to increase capacity. So giving that signal that these are areas where that change could happen, I think is really useful for communication within the city. So I, I think it's good for that. And certainly I want the neighborhood to have the say on where they want that extra density. Also, thank you. I like on the similar committee in the Mazer neighborhood when we did our several years ago. So thank you for, for doing this now. I really appreciate your, your work and your willingness to. Spend the time to represent your neighborhood. Sorry.
So I, I also, because a number of neighbors have been concerned about the gravel pit. If we change it. It is bound and recorded to the, to the land, so it's not like he can flip it. And to someone else is gonna do something. It's actually bound to the uh development agreement.
Yeah, that's why it's recorded so that it would come up on any title search for future property owner to define.
Okay, we've gone way over on this one. This lovely is.
I just wanted to say as the neighborhood board chair that we've come through this, we love it enough. I appreciate the work that the staff has put into it such that I would love to see it expanded. I know it mean changing some of the numbers. But um, I think you've done most of our homework already. I'd love to see Riverside Edgemont and Indian Hills. Put right into it, but I know it mean changing numbers and population, but.
Someone else has to pay for that.
Okay, we will. Alright, well, we, we've definitely got to move on. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. And feel free to grab stuff while we're move on. Alrighty. Just, okay, next, in ordinance regarding the zone map amendment. And every presenter gets to take a roll with Fresh Honey Nancy. From the R one eight zone to the MDR zone in order to construct a hundred unit apartment building located at two thousand north Canyon Road. Pleasant you neighborhood. As we presented by our planner Nancy Robinson.
Okay, so um, this did go through uh planning commission on November thirteenth of the concept plan. And the rezone concept plan was uh approved by planning commission and. The rezone was recommended, they recommended approval for that. Another thing to note is that uh on March twenty seventh of this year, the planning commission did approve um grading of long slopes over thirty percent. Um, I know that you had asked some questions about a development agreement. Um, we have provided the developer with a template for that agreement. We haven't seen anything back, so I don't have any specific answers on that particular. Um, part, but that's a um, just a brief. Do you have some, any questions for me?
Are there any questions for, for counselor Becky Bogdan?
So we don't have a development agreement back.
Not yet.
Do they expect this to pass tonight or is this supposed to be on our agenda for another couple of weeks? Is this on tonight's agenda?
It's, it's on tonight's agenda.
It's also not unusual for the council to let, let us know exactly what. You're expecting to see the development agreement so that we can write it and get that done. So these aren't always wrapped up before you hear the item. Frequently, there are items that come out of the discussion with the developer that need to be added to it.
Will the developer be here tonight?
Yes. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would, I would say it's actually probably more usual than not for the development agreement to not actually be drafted. When the zone change is approved, but for the, the development agreement version of the ordinance says. Mayor is authorized to negotiate and execute a development agreement that includes the representations made but in the meeting. And so often what we do is we just create a bullet point list of those representations in the meeting and the actual agreement gets drafted afterwards. But we don't have. Is the decision made that night or is it decision made another night? Decisions usually made that.
Under the conditions, we don't have actual development agreement, but we tell them what conditions that we want.
Yeah, wouldn't it make sense to decide that when you actually see the agreement? Well, it just depends on how mu, it depends.
How much do we trust Brian?
I mean, it, it depends on whether what's important to you is the principle that's being approved or the words that are used. Right, so you, you understand what I'm saying? So.
Yeah.
So if, if the, if the idea is, and, and I would say even my own counsel to you would be, it depends a lot. On your answer to that question and how complicated the thing being asked for is. So. If, if you say, I want a development agreement that guarantees they only have forty five, that they must have at least forty five parking spaces. I don't think you need to wait to see the draft of that development agreement before you improve it. I think if you say. What needs to be in the development agreement is they must have at least forty five parking spaces. I think that's. But if you're, if you've got a list of like ten things and one of them is, you know, that the fence is made out of the right material. And that I like the way the roof looks and that the electric charging stations. Are in the spots that I want them to be in, then you probably should see a draft before you improve it.
I guess I could just say for my sake, this is a, this is a much greater density than was originally proposed that was agreed to, I don't know, a few months ago. And with that kind of density, I want to see ownership. I want to see, there's a huge lack of condos in the whole city. And um, there's probably the most condos in this part of town, the northeast neighborhood. Um, but. Um, I would like to see this to all be for sale. And I think that will be a great asset in that area. I think it'll. Make a lot of the concerns of the surrounding neighborhoods. That they'll be happier with that and I think it'll be a. We, we need to have more, we need to have smaller, smaller, smaller square footage for people to start in the entry of ownership. And um, I think these condos could do that. Any other comments or? Um, Counselor Bogdan.
But that's something that I'd have to see in a development agreement in order for my vote to be a yes. It would have to come to me, I think, prior to you and me. Voting yes on something like this, I would have to see some guarantee that this would be home, these would be condos, but not only condos. Homeowner occupied condos in the probably two years because this is the. Homeowner occupied condos in probably two years, because this is the college area. Of the city, and so I would want more stricter. Yeah, provisions with that. Normally, we've been saying one year, but I would say two years or more, that they'd have to live there before they could even rent it out.
Right, any more comments for Jessica Nancy? Um George Hamlet.
Well, I just discussed this issue, I I'm I'm a little worried about hamstringing the project because. Of what the market may or may not yield, and it's so. Clo- I mean, I I so I and I don't know who's who can answer this question, but it seems like it's so. Proximate to the university. It's also proximate to residential, that it's got a potential to go either way. It could be a a pretty high level of interest on the part of. Young couples who wanna rent for a year, young families that wanna rent for a year, don't wanna buy. And that they too have a shortage of rental options in the city. And then, so I I I don't wanna, I'm a little nervous about over committing to ownership in a way that. Either ends up hamstringing the project because there just isn't the demand. Um for whatever reason, I don't know what the prices will end up being and if that's gonna be affordable for people. Or that there's not, I just, there's just so many market questions I don't have answers to, so even though I'm I'm in agreement that I want a ownership. Uh whenever possible, I don't know. I don't have confidence that I know what the right strategy is to. Incentivize that or to require it at which level without it creating. Unanticipated harm. And by harm, I mean, you know, you said this is a happy two years. Purchase and then they all, they're all on sale for a year and no one buys them, you know. Uh or, you know, that 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 all the people who need the rental for shorter term have to go someplace else. Because they can't get it there. I don't know, it's a it's a great location to be near campus, this is the issue. That that seems like we can't we can't ignore, because it's. Right next to the stadium, which we'll be discussing later in terms of. I don't know, I don't know if. I I'm not trying to be difficult on that, I just don't, I just don't know what the the right strategy would be for this.
I guess my other concern is, I think mixing rental and ownership is not the most successful, what we've heard from builders. And people who manage these things is that that's not usually that successful, we want to be successful, right? So if it's gonna be one building. I think greatest success would be in having it all be for sale as opposed to a percentage.
What, why would that be exactly, I mean, if you said fifty percent, what would be the?
Um developers and and managers of properties have told us that. Developments aren't very successful if have a mix of it. There's a lot of discord with how things are managed and does what is responsible for what and. Being annoyed at renters all the time and ruining where they live.
I mean, could I could I ask that question to the developer?
Sure.
So do you have a sense of what the market is demanding, but yeah.
I'm Rob Reynolds, uh owner of the property. And uh yes, uh it does create and cultivate challenges, and that's why I have, based on the last season's meeting. That were likewise uh similar to your response as to they want hamstringing the project. I have likewise been to the architect and he recommends that I come across the front of this property. Uh with like ten to twelve townhouse style, which would also tear it, so you have the townhouses, which would be up for sale. And behind that would be the uh apartments, but. He likewise with all of his developments, he's done uh or drawings that said. Oftentimes they don't play and work well together between uh rentals and ownership. So his election is one of two things, one of them is to put these townhouses across the front. That would be solely for sale and or number two is the shape of the building, the first building. That is a little separate from the square building on the drawings that have the proposed. Making that a condoized for sale building. I personally, it's more it's more cost effective for me to do the second, but I like the look and appearance, I think of the first architectural suggestion better.
Do we have pictures of those?
There's not, he he wanted me to present them, but didn't want to go to that next stage of of. Design and drawing until we had the feedback as to that direction, not that that is affecting by the zoning. What it does gives me some dictation, I have a tenured uh development agreement. But waiting for input, I was advised to wait for the input back so that I could finish that. One thing I have agreed to, as one of the concerns, is we take the hill down. Uh that what happened if the project was sale, I volunteered to put a bond in a landscape bond. That would provide the city with the comfort saying, hey, if everything went back to the handbasket and you hit the hill down. Uh we don't wanna be left, even though there's nothing uh uh landscape with the existing hillside slope, but I have proposed. That in the development agreement, I would post it on for the landscaping of that hill. So that if everything went wrong, it would still be budgeted, they could light or we landscape the hill. But, so that's how we accomplish.
Um another question I have for you, this is definitely for a town where there is zero, you cannot have any cars, not parked like a park, like there just isn't a street parking, right? It's not legal to park on the road there and you're gonna go into neighborhoods. So is are you charging for your parking or how is that situation?
I haven't decided whether we're charging for parking, but the amount of parking stalls per unit.
Is good.
Far exceeded, because we were concerned about.
Makes a difference, like they'll just won't do it and they'll just. But because it's charged, they'll go.
I I know I have a a son that's in one of those projects right now. And every month I get the rent and then I get the other fourteen charges of anything that was added on. I I haven't decided that, that's not normally my plan with other complexes that I own and run, is the only thing we've. Charged for is if they wanted additional parking above and beyond, if we have access, we would grant additional parking stalls, but my perception is, is the ones that would go with each unit would be with you. Down the bedrooms.
Yes, okay.
Um councillor. So on the landscape bonding, that would include having whatever retaining wall or something that's necessary in order to stabilize the slope, so you don't have any. Adverse effects.
Right now, if with the green light, this, it would be brought to a two to one slope. The additional retaining walls you refer to is with the next step of approval to build the units. And then with that building of the units, retaining walls as part of the building structure and everything else would be submitted and approved.
Well, yes, we certainly want to retain the integrity of the ground that surrounding cultures are.
And I spent my life in dirtwork side. We did the this total city temple, we excavated underneath the whole temple and that was my company that did that. So I'm very familiar, we've owned several gravel pits as I was just gonna share here, so I'm very familiar with materials and so forth. At a two to one slope, it's way more gradual than it currently exists on the site now. And it would be brought to that elevation through the approval process and once through a process, wherever retaining walls may be needed, they'd be part of the structure and the like would be.
Can you give me some numbers that you've been looking at for a partial homeowner occupation and then renters? So you said like maybe twelve townhouses, but then how many apartment units would there be in that scenario?
The total proposal is a hundred units, uh which is quite less than what the roughly four acres allow, I think four acres under the sign would allow a hundred and twenty or thirty, it's a hundred. And so we're less than required, but I liked a little more space and anyway, so. We're asking for less than what we could, but that being said, insufficient, I don't know if that answers your question.
It does not, so the question is, how many units would be feasible to have for sale? And you've given us two different scenarios.
Right now, there's ten to twelve, the architects say you can fit in townhouse style across the front and around the band. On the property, so roughly ten to twelve percent. And the other unit would probably be similar if they take the first uh building out front, would probably have a similar, you may get as much as a fifteen units. Or so in that front building.
And you're not doing that old commercial building?
I, you mean the the one that was, the previous one we came in with asking for a C M U zoning. Frankly, I loved that because I thought it was beautiful and it gave so much, uh but no, the city uh neighborhood and everything, I thought it was too hot, too tall. Cause that ended up being about seventy views, I remember in total, even though the overall height limit was still less than what could be built if somebody built on the existing property. But anyway, and it's a we're asking for M D R zoning, which the top max height is forty five feet. The total of the hill is at fifty three feet right now, so the total building height. As it will be less than existing dirt, the lone structures that were currently sitting on top.
But your current plan is not to build on that.
On the bill on which.
I think you referred to the salmon project.
Oh, I am, okay. I thought I was confused somehow, thank you for helping me figure out.
Bill pepperoni for the.
I just wanted to be clear, you said twice, landscape mitigation bond for the hillside. Any landscape mitigation bond would be, would need to be for the entire site. We don't, we don't want a dust bowl left with a beautiful hillside, okay, so just be clear.
To solve it or to, right, that's a minimal charge, we already got irrigation water, uh so it's not a question of any of the things and.
Yeah, the expensive part would be.
And to clarify, if you did a townhomes, you're saying you'd still do a hundred apartments?
No, in total.
So like eighty eight to ninety apartments.
And Craig Christensen has a comment.
So with the housing crush that we hear about every day. And it's constantly part of our discussions. Help me understand why a hundred condos won't sell.
Largely, it's gonna be to cost. Frankly, as I see it in this, and. Condo projects, even though they have some legal uh clarifications and enhancements from what they were, there was a bunch of problems for developers associated with condos. Largely uh alleviated at this point, there's still some challenges associated with. Cost and some of the other things that, and I'm not seeing this project be a. An inexpensive project, I don't, I I'm not, I usually don't shoot for the floor when I go to the project. I get chastised and the other way, I wanna make them too nice and reason why they're nice is they say nice. Um so I traditionally, I mean, that's one of my concerns about the townhouses, when you talk about entry level. I'm not seeing some of these townhouses probably be super affordable, because they're gonna be, they'd be nice townhouses, uh people are gonna buy them. Um but I'm not seeing them be entry level, so to speak, townhouses abandoned to do the cost of ground and structure and development. Possible additional with sewer costs that it could be forthcoming.
The um part of what I hear from developers is the economics on a on a. Um apartment building are just more favorable in terms of financing and everything else.
Well, they're cheaper.
Yeah, so get that, the challenge is um as we take responsibility for balancing that. We don't want all high end homes, we don't want all affordable homes, because there isn't any affordability in this, right? Although that's a good thing, it's not part of your project. And so we're we're looking to balance and what I struggle with. Is it's so easy to bring out another hundred apartments, another hundred apartment, not that we don't need housing stock, we do. But we need a balance of housing stock. And so. So it's it's difficult for me to to square that with uh even eight. And there's still eighty eight apartments, we need for purchase owner occupied homes. Now, that's not your issue, I'm just saying, it's part of the issue that 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 we wrestle with, because. We are responsible for balance, we are trying to balance neighborhoods, not just put together projects. And so I I'm with Catrice, I I like the idea of like, if this is a hundred condos, man, what can we do? Uh let's let's make this work. When it's a hundred more apartments, it takes us a hundred more units. Um out of balance since we're already sixty percent there in terms of home stock. So it it's it's a challenge and I I I wish there, George, I'm with you, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. But just let's add another hundred apartments, I I struggle with.
Well, I guess the question lies for affordability and those things, they're gonna have to be in more uh less costly ground. Than what you are sitting right in the middle of the city where ground is expensive. Um historically, we've been doing more uh less density, it's usually been in. More entry level cost of ground, because your ground and infrastructure is what leads you to the challenges level. So your ground costs, infrastructure costs, utilities given to the site is what dictates usually the value of the lots where you could either. Be doing entry level and also size of lots, you know, R one six, R one eight, ten, twelve, so on and so forth.
But the the land wouldn't sell for that price if you didn't think you could make enough money on it, right, like you chose to buy at that price, if if no, if no one bought it, it would go down. Like there's a lot, there's a lot in downtown Columbus, it went down a million, because no one's bought it, because the zoning is single family neighborhood and they finally accepted the fact that. This isn't gonna be, you know, two hundred apartments.
If you if you look at the landscape of this ground, everything around me. Except to the back, which should be separated by fifty five feet of hillside, is already a multifamily. It, as you look at the property, it 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 separates itself with all the other, if you will, multifamily type properties, both in the north, the south. Uh largely the west, so as far as from a city perspective, I would usually be thinking everyone use the highest and best use for the ground. Based on several factors, revenue supplied to the city and otherwise for uh all the other things that are needed with the city. I haven't usually had a city push for lowest and worst use uh on a property with with that comment, that because. You you're handcuffing yourself to the tax revenue due to need for housing or to location for that need of housing. And so on and so forth, traditionally, I'm looking at size as the highest and best use.
See, I do think a hundred condos would sell easily and because it's not A D U. The owner occupied will still be the ki- the owner's family, like that's. Right?
Some some of the condos, but if you say they have to be lived in by the owner and they have to live in for two years, the upper rated families are not gonna go buy a condo. And have uh some of the people living if they have to occupy themselves for two years or one year. Condos cultivates some problems, and I oppose it, you know, that's why I'm proposing uh as a as a person saying, and. If if I was confident that you could move to condos at 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 interest rates and and something that would be feasible. Uh I I would be more into it based on the data I'm getting fed by people that know more about this side of it than I do. I'm being told it's not, uh it's not a promising prospect and I don't wanna. Be sitting on a a problem for a number of years and not be able to move it. And that would become more of a financial blight than a financial than a nice project, if you will.
Like like Craig said, we continually get told, you know, so many people wanna live here, so many, I mean, there's widows, there's widowers, there's newly marrieds. There's empty nesters. And I think there's. Lot of groups that are dying to buy. A condo that's. New and that is affordable. In the sense that it's. Right, but I mean, it's still, like, it's it's not seven hundred, right, you know, I don't know.
Be condos, not kind of a basis, uh and you put them out there, you're gonna be pretty close to those range. Very cheapish, you're gonna do ones, gonna be probably five to six in a condo type of basis. And usually condos, as I understand it, the interest rates offered to condos is a lenders or less on a condo for a single family. And so it cultivates some other issues of financing for some of these families, if they're all doing cash, that would be no problem at all.
It it also seems, uh I mean, I I. Yeah, I I was gonna guess it was about seven hundred, actually. Which is the part of the problem, but part of it to my mind is the location again, um I don't I I don't think you're gonna see. A lot of empty nesters would move a hundred feet from the stadium. I don't think you're, and 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 if there is high rise, uh still, uh there there is demand for rentals despite our preference. To the contrary, and if we're gonna put them anywhere, it seems like this makes more sense than a lot of other places in the city, because you're right next to the campus, you're right next to. Uh a a U V X stop, um so it it, I'm not sure it lends itself to what we're. What we're wanting um because of the location.
I have a guy who'll probably pay for a heel pad, I still prove that on the.
I I know you did.
Can I um make one other comment also that um an issue that we would also be requiring in the development agreement is. Uh issues about sewer capacity. So none of that has been touched on and um and that would be something important, but all of those. We answered by Gordon and his team.
And likewise, that was would be part of the agreement that we would know there's. That was really the only I see right now current damper on. Our project is not knowing what those figures would be because we don't have the information, but nevertheless, no matter what. The beneficial, the ring the home down or the level of the ground down to an elevation, you can actually develop and build it for water. Uh all the utilities uh plus the separation from. A a physical separation from any kind of residential to the east compared to all the multifamilies around.
I also assumed that um the Upper East uh Union Canal, that is also addressed. I also assume that, um, the Upper East, uh, Union Canal, that is also addressed in the development agreement.
It well, it would need to be. I mean, it we're aware of it and that it exists. And that there would definitely need to be something that would.
Because again, I know nothing about canals, uh, just what I read. And this is a big canal, seven to twenty feet.
Maybe I can answer that. Uh, this canal that may have once been is now a twelve or eighteen inch. High pressure water or new water line for irrigation. It's not a canal that sits under there. It's a twelve to eighteen inch pipe. This pressurized irrigation also serves as this site for. Uh, water. Thankfully, they told me I bought the property. I'm probably the second largest watershed owner of that thing, but. Uh, by attrition, that wasn't by purpose, but. But it's already it's already capitalized and engineered to be rerouted depending on the final space plan or site plan. But yes, it's it's planned and planned to be rerouted.
Counselor Bogdan.
Bill, do you have like a list of things that need to be in this development agreement? So we talked about the canal. We talked about sewer. We talked about landscaping. I mean, is there a bullet point list?
Most of those we. Have been putting in the development agreement. The big unknown one is the one you've been debating over ownership. Um, what about sewer simply a warning saying even if you get the zoning, capacity is not there right now. Maybe you'll solve the problem or maybe years before you get sewer capacity. It's not a horrible warning than anything. But the other ish issues you've elaborated on, how how far we can get into the development degree. The unknown is issue.
So if a motion were made tonight, would we have, how would we, how would we word that, Brian? Would we have to say the bullet point list that Development Services has and this is our desire, either homeownership or. Parking in a development agreement needs to be included within the rent?
Yeah, one of those, I mean, you don't need to put it in the motion. The implied motion already has. Uh, language in the actual word it's about. So you just need to articulate the list.
Would it be okay to say the list that Development Services has plus? Plus parking needs to be included within the rent if we go rental or. Or so much of a percentage of the project has to be for for sale product?
And that's it gives you a list tonight, the bullet points we have so far. And so yeah, those in front of you, then you can add to that, but. You think is probably.
Okay, any other questions? Counselor Henley.
Yeah, I, um, I'm just, this may be impossible to answer, but is there sort of a point of diminishing? Uh, returns, uh, where if. I mean, I don't know what the sewer capacity is right now. Like, what what is our sewer capacity right now? We made no improvements. To our sewer capacity, how many units could be built on this? Is that in the, is that what?
Fifteen years.
Oh.
Forget Gary.
It was like sixteen or something.
Go ahead. Where did you get that piece of paper? Oh, it's right in front of me. I did not read this.
Uh, Gary Culver.
Okay, sorry, Gary. You're like.
Um, to answer your question, right now, the capacity. Whatever the zone is, we can handle that. Without any changes. That makes sense. So when we increase it, we're gonna have problems. We've already counted the zoning as far as the capacity. So if it goes residential, I can't remember. Like whatever it is, we can handle that capacity without an issue.
Okay, Gary, I haven't had time to read this, so I apologize. But is there a dollar amount on getting sewer capacity to what he needs?
Second page, there is twenty twenty-one with, uh, prices. There were, there's four different areas. It's part of the practice of the entire length, probably about the freedom.
So for him to get his product in, you're looking at seven million.
That's that would be if you were located up at the top and at like fifty-six hundred. You get closer down to the south room, you can take off a couple of these other projects.
So this all doesn't need to be done for this project?
Those have to be done for this project.
Okay, so which ones do you need?
Say that, okay, this is twenty twenty-one. I'm gonna say those prices are at least seven.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's it's crazy, but that's how the prices are.
Oh, I, yeah.
So the thing about capacity, you have to remember is. We'd like capacity to be distributed over the length of the, we don't like, you don't want. Four thousand homes at the very top, but you can understand, I mean, you won't be able to handle that region and everything. But if you can distribute that throughout the length of the pipe, it makes it much easier as far as handling, we can identify. Like in this example, four different areas. And, uh, this is a study that was done in nineteen, it's in twenty twenty. We finished our master plan last, uh, summer. Fire, Bowen Collins, we bit it out. Bowen Collins is reviewing that. These numbers may change. Okay, as we go back and reanalyze everything, as we update all of our numbers. Okay, so this is, I guess. Best I we can do with the information we have. Okay.
So Gary, are we paying for this or is he proffering he's gonna pay for it?
Currently, right now, it's not in our, it's not, these projects, a lot of them are really barrier, you know, ten year plan, I mean, I probably have your CIP. So the discussion I believe that we've been having is. That's regardless, it's like to go forward. He would talk about and we we did some of the same care if I do that. I'm always. Yeah, that's something I'm receiving, but I believe that's, because we don't have it in our plan right now to do it. Okay?
And so he's gonna proffer to do that. That's good.
Other developers, you know, stream that.
And are we okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
It's free stuff, so we're okay with that? So this is free stuff?
So.
Okay, Councilor Whipple.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say I I like to say the project. My preferred version would be to have a set of townhomes for sale and then apartments for rent because I think. The townhomes would be a more desirable product to buy. Than than condos in a building. And it still addresses the need for more rental units, which honestly, we we have a strong need for that in our city. Um, I don't know if he would want to phase it, but it seems that if he wanted to build townhomes right away, that would be. Consistent with the existing sewer capacity and then you could break it up. That's probably not what you want to do, but you know, that does create a little bit of flexibility. So that that would be my my preference as I'm looking at and I've read through all of the the packet on it.
All right, anything else or can we move on? Counselor Bogdan?
Gary. Is Gary, there's pressurized irrigation now that's underneath this property. We've heard some residents concerned about that. Is there anything the city is concerned about?
As long as it is piped properly, just, you know, probably city has shares that can help. Uh, BYU does as well. They do what you, that's for the most of their out irrigation is from that pipe. So yes, this is a concern. We want to be sure it's done correctly. Um, the good thing is it's pressurized irrigation, so it's like pressure water line. You can move it just about anywhere you want to go, as long as it's not underneath buildings. It's hard to maintain every building criteria that I would say I'd be concerned about. I do. I do not believe that's a problem also. So as long as you can reroute it on the site.
Is that something we're gonna? Is that something you guys are gonna require him to do or is that something we need to put into this? Um, proffer?
I believe it's something that you you can ask for that to be done. It'll be a requirement from, uh. You can help company, you'll have to assign often you can help them to make sure that's done properly.
So put it in the proper?
You can. Uh, we do have Shane Jones, one of our engineers, as part of the that that, uh, irrigation company represents for the city, can store shares, you know, so. Don't worry, no one will miss that happens.
Great. Okay.
All right, we are gonna move on to Michael, a discussion regarding a review of the noise ordinance. And Michael, um, I think we can assume everyone's read their packet on this.
Why are you looking at me, Catrice? You're like, did you do your homework, Kurt? I did not watch the planning commission. I did do my homework.
Hi, everyone.
That's like for every.
For you with like Marty McFly and his gam, but we're just gonna skip it all and go to the slide. But sorry, guys. Sorry, sorry. See, I look at all these great slides I made. I practiced some of them. All right, okay, so. What we really need feedback on you got from you guys is the scope of the exemptions of the noise ordinance. So currently, there are several areas that we are recommending to continue to be exempted. These aren't changes from the current ordinance. This is will exempt emergency vehicles, city sponsored events, temporary activities with an exemption from the mayor. And legally discharged fireworks. So, uh, technically, right now, BYU and all other college and high school stadiums are not exempted from the ordinance. And we don't have any record of them ever receiving an exemption. However, given the fact that saves our hub for community engagement and economic development, we'd recommend that they are exempted in some fashion. So as noted in Appendix Three of the staff memo, there's been a number of complaints from Pleasant View representatives. Regarding BYU stadiums and we went back and analyzed five years of noise complaint data from the police and I just want to go over that real quickly. So there's about eight hundred noise complaints a year or about sixty-four a month. The neighborhood district, the highest amount of noise complaints is District Five, forty-eight percent of complaints originating from this district.
Is that the train?
You win.
Uh, I do not know exactly what they are. Um, but yeah. I don't know if we call, I don't know if the cops are called on the on the train.
Most of it's Joaquin. That's interesting.
Yep, so once we look at the neighborhoods, so five neighborhoods account for half of noise complaints. Joaquin has seventeen percent of noise complaints, Carville nine percent. Downtown eight percent, Franklin South seven percent and North Park six percent. And most of these calls are related to loud music and parties in these neighborhoods and are not related to activities at the BYU stadiums.
Joaquin.
Is Franklin South related to any mall events, like mall concerts and mall proper?
I'm sure maybe a a few here and there, like I, there was like thousands of them that we looked at and we didn't read every single one of them. So I'm sure somewhere in there is probably one or two mall events. Um, okay, so the neighborhoods near the BYU stadium, which we highlighted on the map, Pleasant View and University. If you combine both of the noise, both those neighborhoods over the past five years, they represent. Two percent of the noise complaints. So this is a total of forty-six complaints or nine complaints a year. This map doesn't count the forty-seven complaints that were independently tracked and reported and not reported to the police by Pleasant View. Representatives since twenty twenty-two. If included, this would increase those complaints to fifteen a year. So it was kind of like a comparative track. So. If the independent complaints are included, pleasant would rise from twenty-seventh place to seventeenth place in number of noise complaints. So even with that jump, Pleasant View and University combined still only represent. Three percent of noise complaints. So kind of what we're trying to illustrate here is while the complaints of Pleasant View neighbors are valid. They do, uh, while the complaints of Pleasant View neighbors are valid, they do represent a significant minority of noise complaints in the city. So, um, we've identified three possible options for, um. Exempting athletic stadiums in the city. And we are recommending option one, a exempt official athletic competitions regardless of time of day. But exempt other activities only during daytime hours and non-sport activities taking place at night would require permit. So the time is now yours for questions and discussion, but we would like to have direction. On which one of these exemption options you'd like us to pursue, kind of the scope of it, so we could bring back final English for you guys in January. And we have, uh, Brian and Anna here who helped with the, uh, creation of the proposed ordinance and we also have BYU council. Here for available for questions.
Great, thanks, Michael. Thanks for coming, Eric.
Good to see you.
Um, any questions of the council for Michael or for Eric or Brian?
Counselor Henley.
Just to make sure I understand the highlighted section correctly. So a a rock concert at the stadium would be a non-sport activity that would require a permit.
Yeah.
It fits at night.
At night.
At night, because it would be at night, but if it's during exempt other activities only during daytime hours.
So if the Easter egg hunt is super loud, but it's during daytime hours, it's fine.
Yeah.
I'd like to fest in a stadium of fire would be a good example.
Maybe.
So maybe just, uh, some follow-up on that. BYU Council, who who's here, they came, they presented the leaderships and proposed language that. Was kind of BYU's recommendation about what worked for them. And it was it was pretty broad. It was essentially. Anything that the university wants to do there is exempt and we have.
That makes it sound worse than it really was. And Eric did a good job of presenting it, but and and they, it said, you know. Any official events, including that listed a bunch of things, but but the language was was broad enough because it said. Any official events, including that it really did mean anything they wanted to do. Um, and so, but we had a conversation about the fact that, you know. Really, that probably is okay if it's during the day. It's it's when it's not during the day that it's a question. And so. This one A, what it really represents in, at least in the committee's mind, when we recommended it was. We would take BYU's language that says e- everything that's that. They officially put on and we would say from seven to six, right? And then say an official athletic competitions regardless of time. And so tho- those would be the two e- exemptions. And then if, so if it's not an official athletic exemption and it's not during the daytime, then they need a permit.
Hey, so what if? I mean, so you're saying any rock concert could be done during the day and the decimals wouldn't matter?
Well, there's different daytime and nighttime limits, right?
Well, but I mean, we're, the language as proposed, I mean, the the concept, and and this is it, this is why we're asking for feedback. The concept that's on the table right now is during the daytime hours, anything goes.
For BYU, but not for everyone else.
Not right, not not for everyone else.
And all all stadiums, not only BYU.
For high high school and university stadiums. Uh, so yes, if they wanted to do Metallica at two o'clock in the afternoon, there would be no limit. Based on what we're talking about right now. We can change that.
They can sell the tickets to the end. They should go.
There's a question for Eric then, like, uh, um, how many activi- what kinds of ac- non-sport activities? Uh, take place at the stadium at night? We should, it's like, uh, like EFY thing or.
Right, so, yeah, I know there are a number of those kinds of things that happen, but most, not not that many, honestly. Um. The stadium of fire is not a BYU event, right? Um, but we, uh, leased the stadium out for that. Um, but they, one of the things that happens there at night is we've had, um. Movie nights, right? And those can be for the the student body, right, as student activities. But I've learned this week and and I need to correct something that I told, uh, council leadership earlier. That there are also sometimes sort of tied up movie nights for, um, sponsors for athletics that'll do the stadium at night. And so those kinds of things that would need to be, uh, permitted, right? We'd have to say, listen, we're. We want to do a movie night and we have to go to the mayor and say, this is why we're doing it, because wherever we can do it. This is when we'll start and end. And we'd have to ask for a permit for that kind of an activity. Um.
Or it can be, why to finish it before ten?
Yeah, or silent movies, right? But yeah.
Nature documentary after always very.
Other things that happen there at night, sometimes, um, when new recruits for the football team are coming in. They will bring him into the stadium at night and and sort of say, hey, this is the beloved stadium. This is. You want to play here and night games here are a big community event and it's a big deal. And they'll even play music, you know, at that time, stay, I, you know.
This is.
This is this is an experience that you don't want to miss, right? Um, they'll do that also for, uh, sports camps, uh, the football sports camps that have been playing night games. And that's. Part of your recruiting tool as well and educational tool for people who are interested in football. Come in, you have the experience of being in the beloved stadium and and hearing the categorize, hearing, you know. Being on the field. So.
But could that be done before ten?
It could be done before ten, yeah.
Do you think of that? Like, would that be made as a something you think about in the process of scheduling things?
It certainly could. And if it's done, you know, after ten or I I've rightly mentioned from some of the six, I'm so that they. What's daylight or what's evening? I guess it's part of the process. Um, but part of the, you know, that could be done during the day, but the night experience is a different experience with others. And so they might be interested in having the student athletes come there at night. And they've had team dinners there, football team dinners there and other things like that. So. There are different kinds of events that happen. Also, things that happen are like cleanup after games. And those aren't, don't get loud. I was looking through the list of complaints from from the neighborhood. A number of them are not related to noise. They're related to lights and often they have to keep lights on to be able. In order to be able to clean up after an event and that's at least it's all night. And they need to be there sometimes to prepare for two. But. But, but Brian is, is right that, that when you let us draft the. We're gonna give us everything you can, with, with the, there was, it has to be reasonable, so the idea is that. It's an event that's for the venue that we're holding, right, that is a venue. Related event, um, so we're not going to be having Metallica, um, necessarily, you know, on the track. On or, but, but. The idea is that when you build a venue like a stadium or a track or a baseball diamond. Um, and you can use those for related events, um. That makes sense.
And in, in fairness to Eric, I, I don't have the language in front of me, but I think it actually did say something about related to the purpose of the institution, something like that. The Metallica probably actually wouldn't be.
No, it's a significant limitation, but it's.
Things, things, things we talked about were band practice, uh, you know, the moving nights. Something that the university is doing in further of, of its own mission, so. I think even arguably under the language that, that they submitted, rock concerts probably. Don't count unless it's, uh, like, I don't remember the name of the, of the Mormon pop rock group I used to listen to. Before my mission that would, you know, for a concert of them for EFY, my turn, or the Mars and Brothers or some kind of, anyway.
We all know the names.
I, we are, the, the one A solution is reasonable, we want to be good neighbors, right, and we don't. And we want to be fair and we recognize our residential, you know, communities close by and, and you can't, you know. The football game at the stadium, it's gonna be loud, if you want it to be loud, that's.
It should be, that's great, yeah.
Um, but, but when we can control things and, and do it in a reasonable way and we consider it to our interest and we want to do that in the work of the city.
Counselor Bogdan, Brian, is it really seven to six? Is six when the night time?
Well, we can make it whatever we want to, I think in the other part of the ordinance, actually seven to ten.
Um, but we don't have to.
They don't necessarily have to match, right, I mean, because this is a specific exemption, the time period for this exemption doesn't need to be the same as. The daytime and nighttime noise, so it can be whatever we want. So if you, if you want it to be, you know, seven to eight for, for stadium events instead of seven to ten, that you can make it that.
So we can work within whatever timeframe we want is daytime. Michael, what, what does Salt Lake do? What does the U do?
Do they have carte blanche for daytime stuff or do they?
Yeah, so we looked into the noise ordinances for just, um. Large cities that have stadiums such as Sandy and Salt Lake City and most of their noise ordinances either give a full exemption or don't even talk about stadiums or. Don't even have true, like. As far as the state goes, we have a very restrictive and specific noise ordinance, most of the noise ordinances are the sit- in the state that say. Loud noise prohibited.
Well, I know Orem is very militant about their ten o'clock.
Well, so is West Valley City, I went, I went to a concert in West Valley City and they have to get permission. After ten o'clock if the concert's gonna, even in their concert venue, right, they have to call and make sure that it's okay. So, I mean, I, I am concerned because some of the things that have come up from that neighborhood are during the day as well. So to give them carte blanche during daytime hours kind of concerns me unless it's like so many decimals above what. Is a normal level.
Yeah, I think that that's just, just to kind of go back to the. The data, the police data that we have seen, just if you want to target most of the sound ordinance violations. It's not really hap- most of the violations are not happening at the stadium even during day, most of them are happening. In these neighborhoods and that's really the main.
But just like enforcement, we know that people don't call in.
Yeah, well, we can only go off of the data that we have.
Well, imagine how much more it must be irritated that I recall, my gosh. Oh, ten, kind of, um, Counselor Garrett.
So Michael Woods, I think including stadium, I heard reference to the baseball complex, track and field, that's all included in.
Yeah, we kind of have, like, kind of all of those stadium, like stadiums that are all. Owned and operated by the university and high schools.
And then will someone at some point address the permit process? It's easy for us to say they must apply for a permit, what does that mean?
Right, they're currently, i- in the current ordinance, right now that is currently in code, there is a permit process where a. Group or an individual can apply through the mayor's office to either be approved or de- declined a, uh, exemption permit for the noise ordinance.
And that's what would address decimal.
Yeah, decimals, time limit, and all of those, and there's a list of constraints. In there that the, that is sent to them in a letter, and then if they violate any of those constraints, then we have the fine, you know, we can find them or. Prosecute them in whatever way we do.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Henley.
Yeah, I, I'll just. I, I think I would be in favor of something, uh, along the lines of what's recommended, uh, except. Um, seems like maybe we should be a little, we should tweak the hours. To make this a little more smooth, because I, what it doesn't seem like it helps either the city or BYU. Uh, is if we said everything after six P M is going to require a permit and then there's just this constant flow of paperwork going back and forth. That becomes very tedious and, and, and really not necessary, but if we come up with language there that kind of covers. The majority of the issues. And has a reasonable time of night where if you want to go past that, then you. Seek a permit, but it seems to me if we stop the, if we say this only applies to, um, six P M.
Yeah, we don't have to say six P M, we're still.
What's that?
Right now, the default is ten P M. So we could move that.
Well, what I'm saying, but if it says non-taking place at night, we have to specify what we mean by that, right?
Yes.
And this isn't the official language, this is just kind of a.
Right.
An idea, kind of, I, I would kind of, just to keep the, um. The expectations of the neighborhood in mind, I, I would say that keeping the. The exemption time of night and the general time of night in the, in the noise ordinance tables being the same. I think that would keep a better expectation for them because then they wouldn't have to say, okay, well, this type of noise. Is allowed until ten o'clock, but BYU has a different type of noise, which is six o'clock, that's kind of the trouble that we got into with. The current ordinance, there are four different noise tables and if you look into every single type of noise, there's like a hundred and thirty-two. Different ways to enforce the ordinance and right now we've chopped down to eighteen, so. I would recommend to keep it consistent and I think ten o'clock is a good, good time.
I have one other question, and so this is in nine point oh six point oh four oh on the noise limits. Subparagraph three. So this is if, this is a slightly different part, this is not the athletic exemption, but it's saying if. You are exceeding a certain decibel, you have to take a mandatory ten-minute break. But it doesn't say for what period of time it should be exceeded, does it? So like, if you're gonna be allowed for an hour, then you take a ten-minute break and then another hour, another ten minutes? That, this is, this is, but all that's.
I guess I'll just, yeah, I guess I'll just say, I don't know whether this is a good idea or not, this was, this is in the current code.
Right.
And you just left it because we didn't have a bigger, we didn't have a strong feeling that we needed to take it out. I don't know how enforceable it is, uh.
It seemed weird to me.
Yeah, it's probably easier to just take it out, it.
Okay.
It, it's a, it's a holdover from the old code. We didn't have strong feelings about taking it out, so we didn't recommend taking it out in case somebody on the council is like, that, that's the best part of the whole order.
Yeah, well, because I, I knew this is far the old code because it wasn't redlined or anything.
Yeah.
But, um, it just seems like bad code because it, it says you have to take a ten-minute break, but not in what time period?
I don't know that we've ever.
Have we ever enforced?
I don't know we've ever enforced that.
Yeah, I would say that's probably something, because a lot of that kind of language sounds like, like, uh, OSHA language that I. Kind of read upon, a lot of the old ordinance was based off of a document from the Acoustical Society of America from nineteen eighties, so. Uh, that's probably where that came from, it was probably a great group of committee members from the Acoustical Society of America.
So I would be in favor of, of cutting that section because it. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll take that into account.
Heard and understood.
Um, but as far as the. Um, for the exemption, can we get some specific official direction unified in the council on that one?
Uh, we'll, I'll maybe make my recommendation a little more specific, um, because I was kind of fishing for help, but you kind of. Had language there, I just, I, we need to specify what we mean by at night, so I do think, um.
I would say ten P M.
Ten P M, anything past ten P M requires a permit, is that what you're saying?
Anything other than.
Other than, other than a.
Official.
Official.
Right, and if you're going to do an event past ten P M that does not exceed the noise limit, they don't need a permit either. So either they keep it down low or they get a permit if it's after ten.
And nothing before seven.
Yeah, that would, yeah.
Seven to ten.
Yeah, this, it would mirror the.
That would be my recommendation.
I'll second that.
All right. Yeah, I think that gives them good options, they can either get done by ten, they can be quiet after ten, or they can get a permit. If they're not going to be done or quiet after ten.
It works.
Is that?
What I really want to do is I want to enforce on the bad singing by youth during specific activities.
That's the first amendment.
Because that carries, it's like, it's like the old rendering plant, you know, it just carries in the wind and. It's right up to my backyard. All the screaming and.
And I think it'll just, like, I know that when they're seeing the stadium all night, they need light, but like, we can be considerate of turning all these lights on. Maybe not, you know, to like, just think about it.
That's, that's valid consideration, it's, it's not part of the noise ordinance, obviously, but it's something that, that's part of the compliance.
I think we just always need to be considerate of, yeah.
Cleaning lighting maybe is dimmer or something.
Edlams.
Where's the. All right, um, well, we don't even, we need, okay. Counselor Bogdan.
For your vote?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes, Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor, um, Henley?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Is Travis? Nope, okay, so that passes six oh.
Thanks for reading more, guys.
Thank you.
All right, next we get a report regarding A D U enforcement by Scott Johnson.
Good afternoon, council. It said, this is a report on A D U enforcement, uh, this is because of a request that was sent to. Um, Development Services specifically, uh, through the mayor's office to have code enforcement. Report on a monthly basis on code enforcement activities regarding illegal A D Us in the city. Um, to start off, overall, in twenty twenty-four. We've received a total of ninety-five cases, um, come, either through complaints or through. Finding on our own, through, uh, various, uh, methods that there was potentially. Illegal abuse of an A D U that needed enforcement or at least an investigation. Um, out of that ninety-five cases, forty-seven of those have been resolved, uh, without having to go to court. So a lot of people have been, uh, responding to our enforcement activities. And either making the necessary gentleman apply, um. Well, yeah, without having to threaten criminal proceedings. Um, with the total ninety-five cases that we've had, this is a breakdown by neighborhood of all of those cases. Uh, you'll see one neighborhood, particularly is our, our highest number of complaints that we receive and cases that we investigate. Um, but overall, this chart does show that this is an issue that we do see broadly across the city. Okay, uh, now those, those ninety-five cases. Uh, this chart breaks those ninety-five cases up into where they are in the process of enforcement. Uh, thirty-eight, sorry, I can't see that one very well, I'll turn this way, so twenty-eight cases, um. Still under investigation, we're still, um, checking to see if they are a violation or not, checking to see if there's. Uh, what's going on, uh, seventeen of those cases, we've, uh, we've had notices sent out that we're in that process. That we've sent a notice out, we're verifying if they're, if they come into compliance or not, because we have verified that there is a violation. One case is in that legal process, so they've been, they're possibly in between. Having a letter sent from our attorney's office to being in court and paying the bail, so that's, that's one case that's in that process. Um, fourteen of the cases that we investigated were deemed unfounded, uh, and then.
And how do you get to unfounded, is that them just saying, oh, no, we're not doing that?
So, we, we do our investigation to verify if there is a violation of the city code. Uh, if somebody says, no, we're not violating that, you know. I'll, I'll use specifically as an example, um. Somebody complains about a property being rented out as a duplex, we go knock on the door and say, hey, we, you heard that there's, you know. Rental going on here in your basement, can you talk to us about this, you know, what's, what's going on here? They'll say, oh, no, my family needs to have their, okay, how are they related to you, who is it? We, we, we don't just blow off, oh, no, they're related, okay, thanks, have a nice day. We, we ask additional information to really get to the crux of what that is, because oftentimes. As we start to ask those questions, oh, how are they related to you, oh, they're my cousins. Okay, well, unfortunately, in our code, that is outside of the familial relationship, you will need an A D U license. Uh, to be able to, to have them living here with you. Um, so it's, as, as we do our investigation, we're, we're truly looking to see if there's a violation or not. If all the information you get through our investigation shows that there's no violation. Oftentimes, we'll go back to the complaint and say, look, here's what we found. If you have any information to dispute that, please let us know so we can go back and, and really try to determine what's going on here. So that we're not just. Blowing off, oh, yeah, well, you said that they were, they said they're not, mm, okay, whatever. No, we're, we're looking into it as deeply as we can to really determine what's going on there, if there actually is a violation going on.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Are you able to ask for identification and like, I don't know, proof of marriage or, or things like that? To see documents to establish familial relationships?
We certainly can ask, uh, we.
But do you have any?
We've been told many times by our attorneys, we can ask for whatever information we want to ask for, but. When we start getting into the realm of you must show me this or else, there's, that's what we get into.
So you can ask and if they decline to cooperate, then you will assume that they're in violation and follow the legal process? And then they have to prove through that that they're following violations?
Find more information to verify whether or not that violation exists, if, if we're.
So you don't, you can't do an assumption that there is a violation if they refuse to provide information that proves that there's not.
Correct, we can't just assume there's a violation and file charges in court based on the assumption, we have to have. Verifiable.
You, you've got a burden before you can bring the court case.
Correct.
And.
And tha- and that's, that's our end goal, so our code enforcement in general, our first goal is compliance. Our second goal is through our investigation, getting the evidence that we need, that in the event we have to go to court, we can prove the case.
Most of the time when you ask for ID or something, do they just hand it over, do they not even question your right to request that?
There's a mix of both. There, there, there's a mix of both, there are definitely times that we've asked for, they're like, yeah, sure, here you go, here's, here's my information. And I, I've had people that we've talked to that definitely said, uh, uh, no. You have, you have no need to look at my identification, all right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Moving on.
Oh, what, Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
I just want to, but let me point out. I found out the other day that our code enforcement. Our code enforcement has to go two by two when they knock on doors because there was an unfortunate incident in West Valley City a couple of years ago. Where someone was shot, so this isn't something that is easy for these guys to do, this is something that's pretty. They put themselves in harm's way, right?
Correct, yes, there's, there have been instances throughout the country of code enforcement officers. Either being injured or killed because of them being in the process of doing their job. And so when I came on as the zoning administrator, and it was in place before I even came on to this position, it's that when. When you're knocking on doors, have somebody else with you. And so that's part of our process, a standard for my staff, is that when they go knocking on doors for, as a safety precaution. They have someone else with them. they have someone else with them. If they're going to be going into a property, they're going to have somebody else with them. Whether it is another code enforcement officer or a police officer. Sometimes we go out with, with the community oriented police and have them come with us.
Like, do you save, you save it up for a day and do all visits? One day and then do paperwork? Like, how does that work? It's like, it's a, a day that you know you can get a cop. Oh, great, let's go knock on these twelve doors that we have.
Yeah, I, I leave that up to my staff to manage their day-to-day activities if they as, as they see fit.
It is definitely not a problem getting a C O P to go with us.
That's nice.
Yeah, they're, they're very well aware of it. They, they are.
So, so Brian, this makes me think, like, we can't get ahold of someone, we have these complaints, why can't we just be preemptive and send them a letter and say, you're found a violation, here's the fine. Um, your court date is this date, and then you, they have to prove, send us the proof that this isn't happening. Or this is your remedy to get it, or, or, you know, then we spell out the remedy, but then they just come to us.
Can we change the burden of proof and presumption in the city code for that?
No, no, I mean, that would be great. Wouldn't it if we could just, if we could change the constitutional principle of innocent until proven guilty? Um, but there are different steps to it. Now, what we can, can do and what Anna and I have talked about, I don't know if she's had a chance to talk to Scott about this, initiate or not, recognize that the criminal procedure, which is what the constitutional uh, protection that I just mentioned applies to, is not the first step in the process. Now, could we, now, a- again, recognize that even in, in Counselor McKay's words, we have found, well, how have we found something if we haven't found it, right? We suspect, we can send them a letter saying we suspect, uh, from a, from a, so let's work backwards on the process. From the criminal standpoint, as a matter of both of constitutional law and as, uh, attorney ethics, and I don't want any of my attorneys getting disbarred so that they can't do their job anymore by violating it. You have to have probable cause to believe that a violation of the law has occurred before you can file criminal charges. It, you just, you can't do it without probable cause. Probable cause requires some evidence that it's actually been, that's actually happened. But if we take a step backwards, um, to the notice of violation process. Now, again, at the end of the day, due process, constitutional due process requires that when we notify someone that we believe they are in violation of the law, they have a right to a hearing, they have the right to, to come present evidence to hearing, and we, but we bear the burden of proof. If, if we're having a hearing in front of a hearing officer, we must convince the hearing officer that they are in violation. We cannot make it so that they have to convince the, the hearing uh, officer that they're not in violation. So, but could we send out the notice, notices of violation at, at a lower threshold? Yeah, I mean, I, I kind of get the sense that we haven't, we have a tendency to say, we don't want to send the notice of, no, notice of violation unless we already know if we get to the criminal level, we're going to be able to convict. We could probably send a notice of violation and say, based on the complaint and the, and the evidence we've been able to, I mean, to document, we believe it's more likely than not that you are a violation, which is a different standard of proof beyond a reasonable doubt. And then they have a choice upon receiving that of either saying, okay, I'm gonna fix it, or I'm going to appeal and I'm gonna ask for an administrative hearing. And then if they ask for the hearing, again, we are going to have to be able to present enough evidence to convince the hearing examiner to pay over.
But, so for an example of this, wouldn't it, um, first of all, putting our officers in harm's way like that and having, again, we've talked about the very labor intensive process of that. Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be basis enough to say, as we look at the water records, the power records, and this county records and insurance records, or pick two or three, uh, you're not on the, you're not on the thing. It, it, you're not on any of those and you're the alleged owner. That's our basis. I mean, why wouldn't that be enough?
What's the violation? You're talking about a rental?
Having an A D illegal A D U.
Yeah. Like owner, owner, owner occupancy, because we're trying to get at owner occupancy.
Or that they don't have an R D L and they're obviously renting it.
So what, what's the step that that saved us? I'm just trying to understand. See, I mean, you've still had to go to the door to get the name of the person that you're gonna compare to the record.
No, I'm saying you don't go to the door.
How do you get the name?
I'm saying you scrub the databases and you actually extract that information in and you find out.
They're probably taxed to go into Mesquite.
That's right. No, no, but I'm not talking about the name of the owner. I'm talking about how do we get the name of the person that's living there?
It's irrelevant. The owner is the most relevant part.
No, 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 but you've got.
No, if you've got the owner who's on, on record, isn't that on property rec- record?
Yeah.
Okay, so you got that. If you've got the name of the water, you know, bill, the power bill, the insurance bill, the county records, and they're all different names, isn't that based, say, woo, looks like you're out of compliance? That seems like a very different standard and could be something that we could do much more efficiently.
Do some paperwork on.
Okay, so now, but that only establishes that the primary person, that, that might give us enough evidence to establish the primary person is not, you know, how do we know that there is a, that there's a second occupant?
I, I'm, I'm asking, I'm just asking the question, isn't there a way of establishing, some way of establishing, uh, grounds? Cause we do want grounds, no question about that. I'm just saying, if we had grounds here instead of like, we can win in court.
Right, and that's exactly what, that's exactly what I'm proposing.
See, even if it's the first person, even if there is someone, well, then they would respond by saying, well, no, I'm a second person and here's how that works. Uh, here's the exception to that. But, but right now, we don't have anything other than we go knock on doors and talk to a lot of people.
Well, right, but my, and again, maybe I'm just not following. My, my point is that a home that is being rented by one family is not a, is not a violation of owner occupied A D U, but it would present the exact same information that you're suggesting.
But, so it would, they have to be reported as an illegal A D U and then we look at the record to go, huh?
And you, we need to establish there are two different families.
Oh, could you send a letter to just say, can you please verify?
We can. Now, we did that a couple of years ago and there was a political firestorm over it. So just, that had, and the political firestorm resulted in the council telling Scott, don't do that, you shouldn't have done that.
Well, what about just the R D L? Like, we could just, we could.
Well, and, and that's what it was. It was, it was about R D Ls. We had a, a broad list of properties that were believed to be rentals with no other information other than, there's a belief. I sent a very, very innocuous letter to all of the property owners saying, we believe this might be a rental. If it is, you need to get a rental dwelling license. Here's how you do that. Thank you very much. Have a nice day. And I was told not to do that.
We would love you to.
So I'm, I'm happy to do that, uh, moving forward. We actually working with.
Like, if their taxes are going to Mesquite or California or Texas, then it's probably rental.
Yeah, so I mean, at the end of that, that's a, what you're suggesting is exactly what I'm suggesting, other than maybe the details, right? We gotta figure out the details. We need, we, we've talked about in having this internal task force where we start talking about some of the ways that we can identify the kinds of things that we can look for. At the end of the day, um, you know, and I, and I myself said, I can't remember if I said this to Scott, but I said to Anna, hey, you know, if we're gonna lose some of these hearings, that's fine with me. I don't, I don't care. If we, if we want to start sending out notices based on only fifty one percent evidence instead of ninety percent evidence, and then we lose some hearings, that's fine. Then we send a notice. Then we send a notice to complainant saying, we tried and we lost the, we lost the hearing. What other evidence can you provide so that we can try again? And kind of put it back on their, in their court.
Counselor Whipple?
Could we, you're, you're talking about the burden of proof that we have as these are criminal cases. If we change this to be civil fines or something like that, could we change that perponderance standard more easily?
Well, yes, although I mean, again, I think we already have that with regard to the notice of violation, right? So that's already the standard of proof for the notice of violation. So we can already, we can already go forward with that. And, and so, for example, and again, this hasn't been discussed internally at all, but if, if we, if, if we start sending out notices of violation and they appeal them and we lose, then we probably need to take a step back. If we send out notice of violation, they appeal and we win, but they don't come into compliance, uh, then we're probably already ready to charge them. If we send them a notice of violation and they don't appeal, then maybe instead of, but we're, but we don't, we're not sure about the status of our evidence, then maybe that's a case where we just start assessing the fine. That doesn't require any change in code. That just requires an internal discussion about when we send stuff to court and when we.
On the notice violation, can you essentially use that as a discovery tool? Say, we believe you're in violation, provide us this information to prove you're not? Maybe that could help in, in getting the information you need for a potential case?
I mean, we could. They could ignore us and we wouldn't have a remedy if they ignored us.
Well, if they, they've ignored you, then they have the fine for the notice of violation, right?
Well, I mean, the way you just phrased it, you were phrasing it as not actually sending a notice of violation that we have found they have violated. But again, it, it's all gonna depend on the amount of evidence we have beforehand. If we have enough to get over the threshold, where we think they have enough to go to a year.
Yeah, I think this kind of conversation is really helpful for us as we're talking to our people who are making these complaints. So that we understand, you know, what the burden of proof is and how hard it is to meet that burden. Um, but I do think that there are adjustments that can be made in that notice violation part of the process that can help us feel more responsive as a city.
And, and just to the point of the civil fines, I've been reviewing the code on that and talked a little bit with Anna and doing work search to make sure that we can implement that into our process effectively.
A couple of things, just a couple of scenarios you just gave, sounded to me like if I plead the fifth, that's evidence that I'm guilty. If they ignore the notice, that's basically pleading the fifth, then that makes me uncomfortable.
Okay.
Right?
Y- yes, i- if, like, if we were only using the notice as a discovery tool, if we actually are sending the notice because we actually do believe that it's more probable than not that they're committing a violation and they ignore it, then we can start assessing the fine. If they ignore the notice, they'll probably ignore the fine and then we're probably in court at some point, still having to prove it.
But somebody who's actually not in, in violation who gets the notice, I think, would want to say, oh, no, 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 I'm not. Here's how I can show I am not. Get rid of this potential fine for me.
And, and based on our practice, just so you know, they will contact their counselor and say, how dare you have sent me a letter that I have violation when I'm not. So just so you're prepared.
Yes, I will bring myself to that. I was gonna say, you're just assuming that everybody's like that. Some people I know aren't like that. They're just more. Like they, they. Anti-city and. And get mad or? Yeah, some people would. Yeah. And some people are just rebels, right? How dare you send me a letter? I'm not gonna respond to you because you don't know anything about me and you're not gonna do anything about me and you're the government and you're too intrusive and I really don't care. Yeah. So they make a court and then you're gonna look like a fool. And I've represented property owners in different municipalities who've gotten notices of violation. So I've been the attorney appealing these and going through that process. Um, so it's fun.
Hey, Scott, can we let you finish?
All right. These are the number of cases, I, in each month, that we've sent out letters, sent out letters, uh, from the attorney's office and how many of those translated into actually being filed in court. So it's this year, this year. So very low number of actually having to get into court to gain compliance once we do the enforcement process. So you can just see that we have the months of October and November. Here are the numbers, you know, total of eight cases in each month. Uh, we've been able to investigate some of them, resolve a few of them. Um, here's some of the reasons why. One specific that I, I'm sure some of you will be interested is the A D U F R R D L and the resolution wasn't the home was vacant, enlisted for sale. Um, there were three of those that we, we closed because we did the investigation. We found that it's not being occupied, so there is no violation of A D U ordinance. They are remaining on our radar. We have the cases in our system. So if we see down the road that they're operating illegally, we can jump right on it and start investigating, uh, our new case against the new owner, uh, to deal with that. Um, those eight cases, here's a breakdown of those two months by neighborhood. Again, no surprise, Pleasant View is our, our highest number of complaints received. And then just for your information, we received six, uh, A D U rental license requests in each month of October, November, um, that are being processed. Any additional questions?
So maybe we've given you the impression that because A D U enforcement is difficult, we've given you the impression that we throw our hands up and say, oh, I try. That's, we're enforcing on these all the time, every month. We've got more cases right for us here.
Well, and just so you're clear, I'm crystal clear about that. I, I just, I still think there should be zeros behind all of those. We're, we're still, we've still got to break through in terms of making it easier process. So there are enforcement officers aren't always going to doors and knocking, getting it firsthand with another person. It's like, that just is mind-boggling to me. There has to be a way to use technology to, to streamline this process. Um, so that's, that's my head scratcher. I, I know the staff is doing great work. It just seems like it's very onerous work.
Case.
Should be what we have.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Just on that point, one thing that's helped us with parking enforcement is we don't have two parking people in every vehicle. Like, what has helped us be able to not have that? Three body cameras on them.
Yeah.
That has been helpful to re, to keep people in line and keep our people safe and only have one there. Anyway, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. Um, but still, I'd rather have Kendra or, or one of our other people, cause you know that, I like them. I've worked with them for years. To be safe rather than have a body cam, you know, because she, I'm pretty sure she doesn't pack.
She doesn't, but she could probably beat me up, so.
She is tough, but I, she needs to be safe. But the one thing that I was gonna say is the one thing that I do know about is one that I turned in via a neighbor. They can't find the owner of the house, so there's a verification process of that. Now, I don't know if it's announced, but they do know that they're Hispanic and something's gone on that. So it's not like they don't try. I just think sometimes they run into some pickups that they just can't grab.
I know, I, I, if everyone that's, that are trying extra hard, it's incredibly labor intensive.
Yes.
It's enormously labor intensive. I'm just saying, there's got to be a breakthrough. It would help that. And we put zeros behind all those success failures that's feel faster, their pleasure, all those things.
Hey, Scott, the presentation regarding disclosure document implementation.
Should be able to go through this one pretty quickly. I was gonna go a little more in detail of the process. I'm happy to do that for one, but I'll, I'll make it super quick. So currently the process for rental disclosure documents, after we've reviewed the license application, we send the disclosure documents to the applicant and say, hey, fill these out, have your tenant sign it. If we need to see a copy, we'll ask. Recently you guys made changes to that, which we think would be very helpful in enforcing on bad actors in the rental space. Um, so what we're going to be doing with the changes that have come in is instead of having it be after we've approved, we're gonna move it before. So we're gonna send out, and I've actually, this is a little misleading. It'll be more up in this area. Early on in the process, we'll be sending out the, the disclosure documents to the applicant saying, here's a new section of the code, and you're expecting this, you're, and you need to provide them to us. We're asking you now to provide them to us. So please fill them out and send them to us. And we will not approve the license until they give us copies of those disclosure documents with all the new information required on it. And so it's just an easier way to say, look, hey, if you're not gonna play ball with us because you are violating, we're not gonna approve your license. In fact, we'll deny it and then start enforcement proceedings because you don't have a license and you're renting.
Now, one thing I noticed was that the R D L didn't have car, car licenses on. Did you want that?
Right, right. So this is what the current version is. I'm drafting the new version and I've gotta have it approved legally before we start utilizing it.
Okay.
That's.
That was the only thing I really noticed. Did anyone else have questions about this?
Unfortunately, I do.
Yes, go counsel.
Um, yeah, so the, the bloopiness of this outline like drove me crazy, but, um, because I like more linear.
Yes, it means you've got two processes, processes going on at the same time.
But why, why don't you just have a copy of the disclosure documents that you give them with their application packet? And then they have to, to turn it in as they're turning in their packet?
So their application packet is an online form that they fill out.
Okay.
So there's not a, a, a packet to give them. They, they go on and fill out the form online on the, on the portal website.
Okay.
And then we review for completeness, make sure they pay their, that's where service make sure they pay their fees and then.
See, I thought there would be a good reason. I just wanted to know what it was. Thank you.
Would it make sense to put this on the pa, on the online portal too? The R D L? Would it make sense to put this on the pa- on the online portal too, the RDL? Oh yeah, just to let them know as you're doing this, one of the things you will have to do later is the disclosure document.
Yeah, so that's part of our bottom line, the admin is making sure that we're educating the community, the the rental community, making sure that they know.
Because you have to make it more, it's more distinct for each person, huh? The occupancy and the zoning.
Right, right. And that's why we don't just have a blank form that we don't have to fill in. We want to fill in.
You're right.
The necessary information, like this is what the actual legal occupancy of the property is, this is what.
And they have to go look at it and see if it's even has it off street or whatever.
Right, we have to verify what legal parking is.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, any other questions for Scott? Okay, thank you, Scott. You helped us catch up on some time. Um anyone just take a break when they need to, we're gonna keep going. An ordinance regarding the increase of water impact fees, and this will be presented by Susie Becker, the VP of Science Public Finance.
Go to the next door and grab it, it'll be right in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Impact fee facilities plan and impact fee analysis. And so Andy here was um the author of the Impact Fee Facilities Plan. Which is more the engineering document. Um and it's gonna show, she can answer questions on any of the um numbers without, I'm just gonna run through it quickly.
Did you guys do both of them though?
To save time.
Do you guys do both?
We use the Impacting Facilities Plan.
We did the Impact.
And then the city did the other one?
Yes, mine is the Impacting Analysis, which is more the financial document. So Utah Code, um section eleven thirty-six A specifies just exactly what you need to include. In there in order to have legally defensible fees. So um certainly you have to have some demand created by new development, because if there were no new development, there would be no needs for these fees. So it identifies the demand, it identifies um the service levels. Because we can't charge new development for a higher service level than existing unless we do some. You know, some accounting and and make sure all, because they're not paying more in the end. Um and then there's really been two main parts to an impact fee. And um the IFFP just sets up the IFA, it will show um any existing excess capacity. In your current system and then new development can buy into that existing exit capacity, because especially with something like water. You have to have the foresight to buy ahead and to have facilities to serve new development as it comes to the water. So the buy-in is always at the actual cost, what you paid for those water facilities, even if we're clear back in nineteen eighty and now the prices have gone. You know, crazy since then. But new construction, you also may need new constru- new facilities in order to serve the demands of new development. And those um costs can be at what it would cost you today, so you have to build them today. Okay, the financial document then takes all this information and proportionately shares it among residential and non-residential development. Um it also talk, it also looks at how it's been funded, do we have interest costs to be added in, do we have bond credits that need to be made? Do we have some of these new facilities that are actually gonna benefit existing development and if so, we need to credit? So this was provided by the IFFP, here was your growth. Andy, maybe you wanna talk about the existing facility?
Yeah, go ahead. Okay. So they're broken up into three sections, you can see the top is production, so you have your springs, it's where your water's coming from and treatment. The next section is storage, so all of your water storage tanks. And then transmission, so the pipeline's going throughout the system. So you can see, I'll just point out the totals really quickly. I think we have, um we broke it up into uh three timelines too, so we have existing users. So the facilities that service existing customers, the customers for the for the next ten years and then we did past ten years. But you can see, we have the percentage to the next ten years, cost to the ten years, and then you divide that total cost by the number of ERUs. Which was shown in the previous slide, we need to make a growth. So it's cost that you already thought there in far right. But I'll get back.
Okay, really quickly.
Yes.
When you say, is this all the water or just, is it sewer water too and water or just water? Water.
Colony area.
And sorry, can you explain ERU again?
An ERU is an equivalent residential unit.
Yeah, that's what it's standing for.
So Bon Collins um gave us the the cost and then we looked at how much of that cost would be consumed over the next ten years and how many growth units. Then they also gave us, we had the money into the actual, and then we had the new construction cost. And they also said fairly high costs here in new projects, and if you just wanna touch on that and then I'll finish up with the rest of the math.
So I think since the last time we've done impact fees, there's been a lot of inflation the last few years. So we went in historic projects that we as an engineering firm have worked on, we went in and estimated project costs. For all of the, if you read into the master plan that we wrote for the water plan, we have estimated costs for every project that we outlined in there for. The next ten years and past that. Um so that's where these costs are coming from. I don't know if there's anything else for me to touch on. That's what's driving a lot of this. There's a big pipeline running.
Yes, that need to be done. So when we look at all the costs that we're gonna add up, I'm gonna go back to slide now, you can see on the far right-hand side here.
And is this, is this partly because we're at a point where we are kind of built out? And and as as we've been talking about, as opposed to staying at what things are zoned, we are upzoning. So now suddenly you're needing to increase the transmission of things to what was exceeding what we planned for.
That's part of it. Um yeah, we have redensification going on downtown uh in the city, but there's also the west side development. So the city does have a lot of growth happening on the west side of the freeway and we're preparing for that as well. So when you look at the buy-in to the access to the existing, the fifteen hundred, the sixty-two, fifty-two and the eighty-six. And then.
You could, you could take it out.
Oh, okay. Well, I just wanted to point out the numbers too, but you can see where the big number is coming from is transmission, okay? That's really what I mainly wanted you to see. So then we're gonna add up all of those costs you just saw. What you're gonna be for the buy-in on the top ones and then the new tra- the new cost down here, you can add in consultant cost. There's also an interest cost to new growth because you have a bond outstanding. So that's being used to pay for those projects um new development is buying into, so they can also pay their first share on the interest. But you're also gonna have to credit the portion of the bond that's still benefiting existing and you'll see that here. You just saw that gross fee, there's that bottom number there, it's gonna come over here in the second column. And then we're gonna have a net present value of, we're gonna make two credits here. One is gonna be on the outstanding bond that um we charged an interest on, but we had a credit. And then um some of the new construction projects also are gonna benefit existing development. Or you can't charge a new development a whole impact fee and then say, oh, and guess what, again, over time. You're gonna have higher water rates because you're gonna have to pay for those projects that also benefit existing developments. So we made those credits and then you see like in the last column there, that's gonna be your um.
This would be.
That would be your maximum allowable fee in twenty twenty-five seventy-six hundred, because the gross fee never changes. But the credits change each year and the credits change each year. Because the net present value, there's fewer years left remaining to pay on the bond. Um we pay for new facilities and we also have growth, more people paying for them. So those credits go down, but the gross fee did not change. It's just how you pay it, how much of the check of the building permit counter and how much over time. And then this is how um the fee, so to have this ERU, which asks this great question, what is it? So someone comes in and how do you charge? You know, charge them for their impact fee when they come in to pay their fee. And so what we do um based on. Um the single-family residential, based on the small lot, the standard. That's the same number that you saw just a minute ago, that's the baseline, that's the one ERU. Um and then, if you saw it in twenty twenty-four, there's twenty twenty-five each year, that that fee, you can see. Um just going down, it's a little bit, going down a little bit. And then you've got the small lots um per unit there, that's based on the lot size. Um in order to make it somewhat fair based on, you know, the actual demand based on the system. Also done this with multi-family. Um I don't know if you have any comments on this, you're welcome to. Thank you, Andy, because Bon Collins is very helpful in figuring out what these ratios should be. And then finally, we have here this um based on meter size, this would be for non-residential. So we just saw single-family, multi-family, and now we have non-residential.
So is this usually used for commercial?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't see a price for large lot, or did I miss it? You had, you had small and the mea- and the standard, but where's the large?
Well, it says, yeah.
Large, large would be charged just like the multi-family. So if you go to the next slide, because we're assuming they have larger yards, so we have outdoor and indoor separated for multi-family. Large lots will be treated the same way. So they'll be charged an indoor standard, just like the multi-family, and then however large the lot is. They'll be charged for acre.
And then finally, we have, based on what is currently online, some of these may have changed. Um that the city hasn't updated that, but this gives you a general idea of what other cities are charging on on their impact fees. Um some of these asterisks here, I don't know if you should put on a net, but it means if you have to bring water. Your fee's gonna be higher than if you don't have to to bring water. So not always apples to apples, but you can see some of the comparative fees. Um proposed is relatively high, but it's because of those um high transmission costs, maybe on the west side. You have any questions?
Yeah, so it looks like, because I'm looking at the current water resource impact fees. And the current one doesn't distinguish between lot sizes at all. So what we're, what you're proposing is different impact fees based on lot size. Because that will affect the the capacity that we need to get to that lot, is that right?
We're trying to be as fair as possible.
Okay. All right. So that.
Cities do that?
I I don't know. Do most cities do that? Different options or just one option?
Um I think, I don't have long. And you can take it off so that. Here, we'll do that. Um I work with Keith, I don't know if anyone knows who that is. So he has a lot of experience and he'd be able to answer that better. I know that with the ones that we've worked with and I work with a few other districts and cities. They do do that and they have um specifications for temporary irrigation, things like that, as well as logo even deeper. So that they can be as fair as they can, as as fair as possible. So that small lots aren't being overcharged and large lots aren't being undercharged.
And that, just a little more of a trend lately in the last year or two. Um a lot of concern that multi-family, started with multi-families, that they were putting in a two-inch meter and then cramming in a zillion. Different, you know, doors in that area. So then they, we started looking at the whole scenario, what is really fair based on. Um different factors. So most cities now are distinguishing on the single-family and the multi-family in this way. I know there's at the bill upcoming in the legislature that the home builders really want even more distinction. Um based on these sizes and condos and townhomes and everything, I don't know how much of it will go through, but it is one of the issues that we're seeing more.
Thank you. Do you have more to ask?
Yeah, so can we just go back to the slide that shows the different proposed fee based on lot size?
Single family, right here.
Okay. So for a small lot, it goes uh by about nine hundred dollars, not quite, like eight fifty or something, is that right? But if you're a standard size lot, then the increase would be like three thousand five hundred dollars. From the current.
Oh, right, correct, yes.
Okay.
Good observation.
Yeah, well, that's, that was the the number that I was trying to make clear in my mind. So this is another way that the city would actually be incentivizing kind of small lot infill projects, right? Because the fees would be less for that. You'd have a little bit less or more density, but that would make sense because of the way the water would be used.
I'm not sure that small difference would drive that kind of product distinction with.
It it would make an effect to the developers though, right? And that might fit the difference between doing point one five acres and point two acres.
Yeah.
If you're adding another three thousand dollars to the cost of of the impact fees.
They'll pay more of it, that you're meaning.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I just really wanted to to have clear in my mind.
Yeah.
What we're looking at changing it to and how that's different from what we're doing now.
I think the basis for it was the actual demand placed on the capital facilities.
Mm-hmm.
Um by the smaller lots and the larger lots, because that's the way, what we have to tie it to is the demand.
Right. Feel free to go ahead. Are you done?
We're done unless you have any.
Great, any other questions?
Be back.
John Borget's gonna say something.
You probably noticed uh in the resolution that was part of the material provided to the council is that we. Say law has a ninety-day requirement for implementing impact fees. And what the administration is recommending is that these fees wouldn't actually go into place if the council approves them until July first. Which is a little bit beyond the ninety days, but we feel like we like to be very transparent and give developers, particularly if they have projects that they're close to finishing. Or getting ready to put into place that they can have the opportunity to get those in before they go, you know. I would also mention that uh Iling with Utah Home, Utah Valley Home Builders is here as well and we met with her um earlier and kind of went through the same presentation and so we've tried to keep them involved through the process.
Thank you so much, John. Um, Gary, could you please answer the question? This is Gary Calder answering the question. What do most cities do as far as, do they have different options or is one flat fee?
I will say that in the past, I think it has been one flat fee. But I think with Keith, what he has told me and I also work with home builders, I think the direction we're going is the direction that people are asking for, to make it more fair. I would I would correct you, uh Rachel, we're not trying to incentivize, we're trying to make it fair. So that each home is paying for their appropriate amount of water that they're that they're using or they potentially consume.
Okay, thank you. Um, I mean, you're welcome to speak for two minutes if you want to. As a stakeholder.
Well, I'll just give you my soapbox um opinion about all of this. We have this mandate by the state that come up with affordable housing. It seems what the trend is and a lot of it cannot be helped because a lot of the building that's going on right now is a long way from core infrastructure. That is more what's driving the cost for the developers and the builders right now. The other problem is the the less desirable land is what's left to build on. So the builders are coming up with a double whammy because they're having to improve the land and they're having to bring the infrastructure. It's driving the cost up exponentially. I mean, it's just outrageous. So it kind of lies in the face of this sort of housing concept, even though the lots may be smaller or or the zoning may be changed, that sort of thing. Um, it's just what's happening with our economy right now. Plus, we have kind of a false sense of security here in Utah County because we have a lot of jobs and they're high-paying jobs and it's always supply and demand. So if you've got people making a lot of money upon Traverse Mountain and some of those places like that, you've got graduates from BYU, UVU, they're wanting to stay in the area. They secure jobs that are making quite a bit of money, you've got a husband and wife starting out, they're gonna build a nice new big home. And so it's driving the costs and it's kind of cutting out the bottom end for those who are trying to get into their first homes. And um so it's it's a problem. And we've we've lived in a false sense of security in Utah County because we've had jobs where most of the country and most of the state has not. We've had um, we've had prosperity here. And that's been to our advantage, our rate of homes. We've already got thirty-three signed up for this coming year. Things have been really good in the building industry, but it is a backbone and I have to remind cities constantly that developers and builders put their infrastructure in, they build more communities. And so it's hard to see it jump, you know, nearly double. But it's sort of understandable. I wish it wasn't the case.
We're experienced in Tuna City, right? Like our capital approval projects, that we can't even get them done now. We need to save another ten years to get the millions because they're like triple, double the price of what they were. So everyone's experienced.
And you've got a limited program plan to develop and to build on. So, you know, you're limited. Thanks.
All right, one more, one more question. I'm so sorry, but, no, I'm not, I'm not sorry about this call. So I see that we have different prices for each year. Would we be adopting that kind of schedule in the fee chart? Just like we have for the stormwater impact fees where it changes purposely?
Yeah, we get to adopt it throughout twenty thirty-three. Would that be the ask?
So we did discuss this uh this administration and typically what we have done in the past is we have just kind of adopted the initial year and not how to adjust each year. But I know we just mentioned that the study was done uh very methodically based on uh on the cost for growth and the administration would be supportive if the council followed the schedule. We could, it's up to the council what they want to do, but that 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 the analysis has been done and the actual cost of the growth is a show.
Okay. Yeah, because I see that we've already done something like this for the stormwater impact fees. And we've got those listed through twenty twenty-nine with a different fee from twenty nineteen, each one of those years. And it seems to me that if we've done the study and we have the numbers, we should go ahead and adopt those. And because it looks like the last time we did this was twenty nineteen, maybe? I don't know if we even updated it then.
We have not updated since, that's correct.
Did we update it in twenty nineteen though?
Yes, we went through and did all the fees there.
But that means these numbers are five years old and honestly, for a small lot to only increase that by nine hundred dollars after five years with the dramatic inflation we've seen, that's a pretty good deal. Um, so I would would be comfortable adopting this and we would probably that there may be more clarifying language that we need for those single-family residential, like how we do the calculation on that, so that there's a little bit more user-friendly nature to that. But I would want to adopt a chart like this as well as the, what do we call those? The different meter levels. I think that would be really useful. Um, I also appreciated to see that the cost of the study was able to be rolled into the fee. I really appreciate that we are able to have outside experts go through, do the number and do the analysis so that we have a real sense of how much these things cost. And so that there's there's good basis for the fees. So thank you.
All right, John.
I would just mention, there was a fair amount of work that went into the ordinance, it's in your packet, the supports, following this and having all the schedules that are listed here.
And what are we seeing? It's not tonight.
No, it was, what it would be would be brought back in January.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, I think that, oh, Gary Garrett.
Well, just to thank you also, John, and the administration for allowing this transition to be a hundred and eighty days and still, instead of ninety, I think that will be a good message and helpful to developers who are in that process.
Thanks.
And I love it that we're making more steps towards being sure we're not subsidizing things. This is awesome. All right. Okay, next. Um, in order to make City Code Chapter two point oh five, the election code presented by Gary Millward. We are ahead of time now. Are we? What did we do that? It's amazing. So you don't let us have potty breaks?
Yeah, you weren't giving fun.
Consent of the government. Oh, yes. Yeah, exactly. Come on, where's Gary? I want to show.
Is your attorney present?
You guys are ahead of schedule. Well, we were now, we're behind. Potty break. All taking a potty break. Yes, for ten minutes.
Yeah.
Ten minutes? All right.
Okay, ten-minute break.
All right, we're taking a break now.
City Code Chapter 2.05, Election Code presented by Gary Millward. And then Heidi Allman will also speak.
Thank you Chair Council. I think this is relatively straightforward and hopefully not too difficult to go through. So some years ago, we noticed that several of the references in this chapter of City Code did not track with references to the current Utah Code. So it called out sections of the Utah Code that the state legislature had modified and now refers to things that are nonsensical and not on point. So we went through and made some updates and then the legislature changed it again. So we went through and updated it again. Now we're before you with those changes. There's a couple, you'll find them, I'll point them out. There's a few kind of funny things here that may require a little bit more attention. And I'll go through those one at a time. If you look at 2.05.020, let's see. So it starts there at the bottom here on this slide. You can see there on the Utah Code section, we've changed it from 4 to 7, which is the correct reference. You'll also notice we proposed putting in within 30 days of its receipt. That language appears in the Utah Code, but for some reason did not appear in our code. So we thought it would be appropriate to add it. If you go down then to 2.05.040, you'll see a number of those changes where it's just subsection numbers being updated. We're going to come back to this at the end. Heidi would like to give you some thoughts about some proposed additional changes to this section if they're amenable. You'll find there in subsection 2A, B, I, 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 another one of those changes. And then we have here on subsection 3C. And this is just kind of the strangest thing. You'll see there, they'll be striking out the reference to the Utah Code. The code section called out there has been both renumbered and repealed and does not exist. So that doesn't make a lot of sense to have it in there. Yeah, it gets worse than that though, because I went down the rabbit hole about what did this reference? And I tracked down the language that has been renumbered as 10 line A402, which is a statute entitled Information and Technical Assistance from the State. And reads, "Each state official department and agency shall promptly deliver any data and information requested by municipality unless the disclosure is prohibited by law. And permission, any other technical assistance and advice that they have available to the municipality without additional cost to the municipality." Now, that has absolutely nothing to do with this at all. And I can't, I do not know how this happened. I spent some time trying to figure it out and finally decided it doesn't matter how it happened. What matters is that we address it and fix it. I also spent some time trying to find this language currently in state code and I cannot find it in Title 10. I don't believe it exists. So that may be one decision point about whether, now I think at a minimum, we need to knock out or the council ought to knock out the nonsensical reference. There's nothing in state code that I can find that says a candidate has to dispose of all contributions by November 30th within five years after the date of the election. At least not in Title 10 for municipal officers. So the question is, do you wish to retain that or should we just take out subsection C altogether?
So I'm trying to piece back to when we did this last time with Counselor Sewell. I think that the deadline was invented by Counselor Sewell and the council when we did this last time. So I think that's why you're not finding the deadline in state code. I think the reference though was to something in state code about what contributions could be spent on. And so, and this is something we can do in the interim between work meeting and the final thing. If that's, if it still exists, it's probably in 28 instead of 10, but it might not exist anymore. So, but I think that's, if you're going to look for something, I think that's what you're looking for.
Should I have asked Brian before sending it up? Clearly.
Well, the problem that you're trying to solve is, oh, so the problem, so that what he was trying to solve when, by coming up with the deadline is people running for office, collecting, and I'm trying to resist the temptation to refer to headlines about federal elections, but people running for office, amassing a war chest to spend on their campaign, not spending it on their campaign, turning in their last finance statement that's required by law at the end of the year, and then spending the rest of the money on whatever they wanted to spend it on. And having no record of it because their last campaign finance report has already been turned in. So what this was supposed to do is say, you have to spend it all by the time your last campaign finance report is due, so that we know what you spent it on.
Well, as somebody who's passed the five-year mark. So I mean, the thing I don't like about it is that if, I mean, I don't know how much, how likely it is that we're talking about war chests in municipal, municipal elections. I mean, we're talking, you know, hundreds of dollars, not tens of thousands. But if, if a candidate is in year five of their second term and they say, well, I don't know if I'm going to run for a third term or not. Why would they have to spend their money? Why can't they hold on to it until they make that determination and then, and then if they decide they're no longer in office, I mean, I don't know how you track it, but I'm assuming that I would just, I'm still held to the same rules about how I spend that money, meaning I can, I can give it to other campaigns. I can use it for political purposes, but I can't like go buy myself a stereo system or something. I mean, wouldn't there be normal ways in which that would be?
Well, I think you, I think you pointed out a good loophole that I don't think was considered first time, the first time around. I mean, I think the idea here was like the 50-year language, my recollection is, was specifically come up, come up with by Counselor Sewell and whoever else worked on it to allow you to make decisions about running again. I think the idea of a third term and the money and there being money left over from the first term. Because if you only had money left over from your second term when you ran for a third term, you'd still be okay under this. The problem would be if you had money left over from your first campaign for your third term.
Well, I didn't have an opponent in my second campaign.
And I don't think that, I don't think that was even considered. So to the degree that that's a problem, we could just fix it. To your other point though, you're right. This isn't actually creating a new, a new law about what you can spend it on to the degree that that state law still exists if it does.
In a quick and dirty search, I can find nothing with both 50 or November 30 anywhere in Utah.
Well, yeah, I don't think those, I think that's totally invented by City Code. I think the only thing you would find in state code is something that says what you can legally spend contribution. And that is, that's already in state law. So this has nothing to do with that. The concern Counselor Sewell had, as I recall, and I hope it really came from him since I'm putting all of the blame on him for this, was that although that state law exists, once you are outside of the bounds of needing to find campaign finance reports anymore, there's no way of ever knowing if you've followed it or not, absent somebody making a complaint and the police doing a forensic accounting of your campaign.
What's that? Yeah, I just don't think it makes a lot of sense. I mean, it seems like it doesn't solve the problem actually in a way. I mean, it, well, I guess it solves the problem, but then it, it hampers in all kinds of other ways. Like candidates, candidates who have money left over are in a position to help other campaigns. But you're no longer, you can't do anything because you have to spend it all. And I don't know, it just seems like 50 years seems kind of arbitrary to. It's like, what do you know in the fifth year that you, that's magical?
Yeah, it passed away to Christian A. B. so much from his whole campaign. He's very old.
Right. So. And what I said, this feels like, well, I think it's an elbow gun. I mean, the number of the reporting cycle, just so interesting, George's point, this, we're talking about hundreds of dollars, not getting wealthy.
Yeah.
You're making Heidi's case better.
I mean, I would like, I've always wanted a really nice stereo system in my car.
I thought you were going to say on your bike.
My bike. Yeah, I wouldn't mind that.
All right.
Give me more ideas.
Oh, you need a motion that we delete pre-C. Oh, second. So we'll take a vote on that real quick. Christian says?
Yes.
McKay, yes. Whipple?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I keep on it.
Yes.
It's Travis online. So that passes 6-0. All right, keep going Gary.
Appreciate that very much. If you look in subsection 5, the same, same portion of the ordinance, there's further subsection changes and then coming across the fun word telefonists in 205.050, which I think is still a thing.
Telefonist?
Yeah, regulates people calling for purposes.
Paid telephoneist.
Yeah, no changes in that one, but we do have one other subsection change in 205.060, sub three, you can see there, which again, that's just to go back and match what the Utah Code currently has. Okay, so those are the proposed changes with that one strikeout that was voted on. Formatting is a little bit different. Okay, so on 205.040, you'll see here the by a state campaign finance statement provisions of our code significantly more stringent than Utah Code. The Utah Code just has the three, which is 28 days before the election, seven days before the election, 28 days after the election. As you can see, we have substantially more than that. It appears for most of the time, this was modified in 2019. So we've had, I guess, two elections since that time with this as the rule. And I suppose with that time now passed and the question has arisen of whether that's really necessary. And I would like Heidi to speak to her experience.
Go Heidi.
You guys have the same experience that I do with these financial disclosures and how many there were. It seemed like with this last election, especially with the date changes, it made things a little bit tricky to calculate. And it seemed like we had a disclosure due and then it was like a week or two weeks later, we had another disclosure too. So it didn't allow for a long time. Most people's disclosures remained the same. So I would recommend that we continue or continue with this conversation to have our code as, as it relates to financial statements, have it match state code. So it still allows the same timeframe. So we're still getting the same dates of reporting, but there's just a couple less. So it allows for more time, more changes to be made instead of what it seems like another couple of weeks where I'm sending reminder emails. Unfortunately, last election, we did have somebody, a candidate who was disqualified for failing to submit a financial statement. So I would like to eliminate at least another little chance of that happening. But it seems like a good idea that we would just continue to follow state code instead of having all the updates within our.
Yes, please.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Counselor Bogdan?
I'm supportive, but I want to know why Brian, why?
So my, my recollection is that this arose because, let me see, I don't think I'm getting this right, but what I, what I definitely remember is that there was some sense that, that when this was revised, that the reporting under the state code was not adequate and timing was not helpful. Now, when I say helpful, my recollection, this is the part I'm a little bit foggy on, but my recollection is that I think in the election prior to this passing, there had been a race where one of the points of contention during the race was actually over who the funding groups for the different opponents, different candidates were. And there was some sense that the deadlines in the code, in the state code, didn't require those reports to be given in enough time for them to be analyzed and used as the weapon that they wanted to be used as or to be defended against them being, the accusations being made. Anyway, that, it was something about that. I don't actually remember the details. I don't know if you remember Gary, because you probably voted on this the first time around.
Caused the problem.
I do know that I was told, and it did happen in my race, that people don't necessarily disclose, they'll spend their own money and then they'll get reimbursed again by whoever's giving the money to them. So then you don't have a good sense of who's backing whom, but at the same time, they still don't have to file that until the seventh disclosure period.
Yeah, I, I don't remember the details. I don't know. It seems like we haven't had problems since, so I can't speak to whether we haven't had problems because of the changes we've made or because that was kind of a one-off. But there was, back when this was passed, it was the result of some, some counselors feeling essentially like there was misconduct in their race and that this was what was necessary to fix.
Can you make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we align our rebuilding to the state's requirements. That right state, state's requirement.
State code.
State code.
Just for clarification on that, looking at a state is currently 28 days before, seven days before, 30 after. So it's a little bit different.
Yeah, and it's plenty.
Well, and one other thing I would say, we're empowered by the statute to have more stringent measures, but not less. You can't go anything lower than that.
And those requirements are for both primary and general?
Yes.
I'll second that. Or any discussion on the motion?
I should make a lot less emails for Heidi.
Yeah, you don't need to be doing busy work.
It's, it's annoying and it's also, it was not helpful at all. I mean, it's possible for someone to show almost 70% of their expenses on the last report. How was that helpful? I don't care if you had 20 before that. So I think it's a necessary burden.
All right, we'll take a vote on the motion. Count, um, Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Henley?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
And Counselor Christianson?
Yes.
And Travis, are you online? Want to vote? He said he does the pound six is not working. All right. Oh, we can hear you. All right.
I'm a yes.
Okay, great. We got the yes. Okay, so that passes 7-0.
All right.
All right. If there's objection, we'll now recess the Provisal Council and convene as the redevelopment agency governing forward by unanimous consent.
Okay, RDA business. So we have a resolution amending the bylaws of the redevelopment agency of Provost City Corporation. This will be presented by Justin Harrison, our council executive director.
All right. Thank you, RDA board members. We'll head for retreat. So my law amendments have circulated the board the last couple of weeks. Not really any substantive changes than you have previously seen. Here on the first page, the effective date would be today, December 6th or 17th, should this be passed in tonight's board meeting. And really just a few changes within the bylaws, some of them grammatical, others to conform with state codes. So section 17C, 1, 2, 0, 3, just designates the titles of officers which are updated within Article 2.
We moved this.
Oh, I can. I'm one of those people right now.
I have a question real quick.
Yes.
Why are we changing the verb form in 1.3 because isn't the subject majority and that would be singular? So you would need constitutes? Okay, let's not.
We can update that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're really, the majority of the changes come in Article 2 that describes officers and employees of the redevelopment agency. So this is where the changes, you reflect the language in state code and 17C. So the mayor serves as the executive director of the RDA. We have various, various changes to that title throughout the document. various changes to that title throughout the document. Probably the most substantive changes come in section 2.3, 2.3 and 2.4. This is how the council and the board have effectively been governed over the last, last year or so, and have been discussed by the board previously, but this just puts those changes into the bylaws and its writing. So the vice chair of the Pro Municipal Council would serve as the chair of the RDA board, and vice versa, the vice chair of the Pro Municipal, or I'm sorry, the chair of the Pro Municipal Council would serve as the vice chair of the RDA. Really, ups or directed toward, just having continuity of leadership that allowed for ease of setting agendas, council RDA or leadership meetings, et cetera. So those are effectively all of the changes. If you go on to page five, again, these are changes that, just following changes for Title, so we can see state code, and then we have an adoption date of today, should the board choose to adopt the changes to the bylaws. But any questions?
Counselor, or board member Christiansen, sorry, you switched roles.
We did. Thanks very much. So does this require that to happen, or this suggests that that happened?
This would require that to happen.
And so what if the vice chair said, "You know what, actually, Suzie's better at this, and let's let her do it."
Get over it. Change the bylaws.
Well, I'd love to see some flexibility in case someone opted out.
Sure. That's, we could have an opt-out clause. I think that's why it's.
Perfect.
And then you get over it.
You could say, you could say the default.
Yeah.
Is this arrangement, unless otherwise approved by a majority of the council.
Well, or even if, even if it was the, if you were the vice chair, George, and you just said, you know, "I prefer not to," that would be it. So it wouldn't have to be a vote, or we could go, I like the idea of just the standard thing. And just again, there may be times when someone says, "And that's not my thing."
Well, I, I would still suggest we vote on it, because we'd still have to elect somebody to be in that position, so.
We don't need to vote on them not doing it.
Well, but then somebody has to replace them.
Well, no, but there's two different points here going on. One is that, the reason this was put in is because right now, it's mandatory that you vote on it, even if you want it to be the same two people, right? So what you're suggesting is, this is what happens unless the person opts out. If you do opt out, then you do have to vote on it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. I'm just clarifying, what I don't think we want to do unless, if you.
Is always have to vote on it.
Is say, the majority can derail this, even if the person wants it to.
Right. No, that's not what I meant. Yeah, I was just tucking on that we would have to vote to come up with an alternative.
Well, equally, how would you say that? Making motions?
If, if you just want to make a motion, principle, we can keep reporting.
So I would make a motion that we have some language in there that indicates that that's the default preference.
Yeah.
But if it is the will of council to do otherwise, they're.
Well, well, if the person wants out, then the board will choose the replacement.
Yes.
I would say.
And, and that way, you're not changing the council leadership.
That's right.
Or changing the RDA leadership.
Would we do that for both chair and vice chair with the RDA?
Yeah, if they want to opt out, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can include that language in our.
All right, any discussion on that matter?
We had it.
Did we second George's motion?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
So we're good? Yep, and we'll vote with Counsel Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Henley?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
No, no, keep going. I delegate.
Board member Bogdan? Yes. Board member Christiansen?
Yes.
Board member McKay, yes. Board member Coben, are you online?
All right. Okay.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yes, I'm a yes. Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
All right, that vote passed the seven zero. All right, if there's no objection, we adjourn the redevelopment agency governing board and reconvene the Pro Municipal Council by unanimous consent.
And we are now going to move to a closed meeting, which Brian will go over.
Oh, excited to hear it read.
There's, turn the microphone on. There are three topics for closed meetings tonight. All of them deal with the character and confidence of individuals, which is a legitimate reason for closed meetings. So it would be appropriate for motion, closed meetings.
I live at the meeting for the reasons listed by Brian Jones.
And we will call for the vote of a closed meeting. Counselor Henley?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christiansen?
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
And Counselor Coben?
Yes.
All right, we will now adjourn and move to closed meeting.
Yeah.
You're recording.